Council, we'll call the manual order for the record is July 13, 2021 at 4:30. We will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh will be joining us shortly. Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Byrne.
And how come you didn't say anything? Really? Is this the first time I've caught you before you caught me? Well, make her than glad we're on the record now. So, Mr. Mayor, it's my distinct privilege this afternoon to make a motion to adopt the agendas published.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is published. Next up is our consent agenda. Councilman Byrne.
It's my distinct honor this afternoon to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the clerk to, for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second, the motion.
A motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will go into department and commission reports. Our first item up is a Human Resources Department fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in amount of $123,000 for citywide compensation market studies. Turn this over to Director Ritchie.
Everyone hear me? Dean? Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. I stand here in front of you today on behalf of the city's compensation committee requesting a budget amendment as Mayor Simison just mentioned in the amount of $123,000 so that the city can engage with Gallagher's Compensation Consultant Division to conduct a comprehensive market analysis on approximately 225 positions covering our general employee population. And in addition to that, help us develop for your future consideration, a updated and new compensation program for general employees. With that, I will stand for any of your questions.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
A couple of questions from the proposal that it's part of the contract. It had a minimum and a maximum. And one of the variables was that, I forget, that was referred to like a phase two add-on questionnaire to employees. Is the intent that that's certainly going to occur?
Yes. So what, Councilmember Borton, what you're referring to is called a position description questionnaire.
Bingo.
Where we engage with the employee to accurately assess the functions of their current positions today to ensure that we have updated and accurately reflective job descriptions. And so phase B is to include that into the process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
The follow-up on the second prong of what they're being tasked to do is provide examples of alternate mechanisms for compensation structure citywide. Is it base, is it, is it compensation only? I mean, it's not addressing benefit type package things, just compensation.
That is correct, Councilmember Borton. It is solely focused on the compensation aspects of the city's pay program.
Yeah. It's the last follow-up on that would be, is the finished product something to the effect of here's, here's data using your current comp system or merit-based system that we have now. Here's proposed adjustments. And then option two is here's a totally different way to do compensation and option three is a different way. And here's a menu of three different ways you can do it. Is it something like that? Or they're going to say, here's three ways we recommend you choose door number three.
So we're reaching out to them to provide us compensation expertise in helping us develop a compensation program that is going to fit the city, be market competitive and move us positively forward in the future. The program that we currently have in place today, which you're referencing was implemented back in 2013. So it's several years old and what we want to do is make sure that we have a comp program that's market focused that provides a market competitive wage or keeps us at least in the ability to be competitive to attract and retain the talent we need to move our city forward.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Councilman Borton.
I might, I might not have parsed the answer out of that.
Sorry.
That's all right. I'm just trying to get a sense of, is that, is the end result a here's a merit-based program or your current program adjustments? But here's a different way to do compensation.
Correct. So two, two phases, two, two projects, if you will, under this contract. One will be the full market study of all of our individual positions for what is considered market value for each of our positions that we have here at the city under our general employee plan. It's not looking at it compared to the current compensation program that we have in place today. It's looking at the market value for the job and making recommendations that we will bring back for consideration. The second piece to that is to look at other options for a compensation program that we would bring forward to the council for consideration and adoption for a future fiscal year.
That's helpful. I thought that's what was the gist was options to consider kind of just different manners in which you might want to do compensation.
Different considerations for a different.
For a future date.
Yes, we will be back in front of you with those conversations and recommendations. Yes.
And the ability to find those recommendations or not.
Correct. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
I move that we approve Human Resources Department fiscal year 2021 budget amendment and the amount of 123,000 for citywide compensation market studies.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Byrne. All ayes, motion carries. The ayes agree to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item seven, which is a Solid Waste Commission Community Recycle Fund Program and Update. I will turn this over to Mr. Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Steve Corey, Chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and I stand here in front of you representing the members of that commission. The Community Recycling Fund Program is a spot where after recyclable materials are collected within the city, if, when they go to market, we get some revenue from that, they go into this fund and traditionally, up until a couple of years ago, we went ahead and opened up a window in the start of a fiscal year to release grants to individuals in the city that would have a project which either promoted recycling or used recycled materials and it would maybe finance something up to $5,000 and then go ahead and pay half of our supply, half the cost of something that was over $5,000. But up a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, the revenue stream from recycled materials dried up and the account has basically just sat idle since then. But if you would remember from my annual report earlier this year where we started the year was at about just under $39,000 and this year we've been accumulating about $1,000 a month. The account balance now is at $48,000, though we do have about 2,200 of that that's reserved for a plastic bottle of recycling effort that's going well out at the transfer station. But being as we're getting to a significant amount, also part of a couple of years ago, the direction we had was this is not a savings account, that it is something that is to benefit our citizens and to go ahead and encourage them to recycle. The commission felt like maybe it was time to go ahead and consider opening the account for some kind of an effort, just as a quick discussion, things like establishing some kind of a contest for recycling efforts or maybe recognizing good practices within there or maybe just the traditional version that we had. But anyway, the commission set up a subcommittee to go ahead and start fleshing out what we were thinking of. And we're going to start that discussion at this coming meeting. If it's consistent with what council's thoughts are, but we felt like it was appropriate for us to come before council before we started this effort and find out if there was any direction that council had for us that we needed to consider. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Council, any questions? Or thoughts? For the record, Councilman Cavanagh joined us at 4:40.
Thank you. Just a quick question, maybe?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Steve, when would you like to get those recommendations by? Do you need those today, the next week, before the next SWAC meeting?
No, as I hinted, we would traditionally, what we would do, we would open advertisement for whatever was going on on October 1st and receive applications, say in November, make a decision in December and allow someone to start something in January. So there's, yeah, it's not immediate, but we would love to have the sense of the council in, within the next month or so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Steve, I think it's great to open it up to the community and folks for suggestions and then I mean, I was curious to see what council's feedback would be if they wanted to like vote on people's suggestions that come forward or if they, kind of how they wanted to handle that. I don't know if in previous years, council weighed in on those options or if, you know, SWAC went ahead and just picked one and moved forward. But I guess maybe you would need feedback on that as well.
Council, any further questions or comments or we'd just like to get those to Mr. Corey over the next month.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just, just the thought that, you know, I, I think, Steve, as you guys go forward, develop and get the input and different things like that, I think then follow the process of SWAC deliberating, discussing. It's about the same thing. And then just come forward to the council and make a recommendation and say, okay, here's, here's what we looked at and here's what we think would be the best direction to go. And then we can make that informed decision from there. So you guys do a good job with that stuff. So.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, there are next item.
Mr. Members of the council, so I sent out a draft to the committee of what their recommendations were on this item on the Marin Council compensation.
So I've said, and do we want to wait? Are you expecting someone else to show up?
Yes, sir. So I
Which do we like?
Sent it out. Mr. Everts from the committee was going to do the presentation. I haven't heard back from him, so I have reached out to him today to verify. So if we could either put this at the end of your next agenda for the regular meeting for a discussion item, if we could do that. So that way, I don't know whether he thought it was six o'clock and not 4:30. So I apologize.
Could we just go to number nine and see if we hear back from him in the next half hour?
Certainly.
The next, does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll skip number eight and we'll go to number nine. So we'll ask up our community development department to come talk about the Orchard Park Certificate of Occupancy Approval Process. I'll turn this over to Director Ariel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Really grateful to be with you this afternoon, evening to talk through and report on the Orchard Park development process. I think what we'll do is we'll break it up into three parts. So first, we'll have Caleb kind of talk about the transportation and planning elements. Bruce and Ted will discuss kind of some, some terms and maybe, maybe more of a little bit of an educational piece on the development process, construction and occupancy, how that, how that works in general. And then we'll turn some time over to, to Bill to talk through the DA specific items. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
At the outset, whether Cameron or Bill can answer this question, at the end of the information we're going to gather, I've reviewed everything. But is there a specific ask of council to, is it informative or are we being requested to take a pet course of action? Some sort.
Mr. Members of the council, I think in our discussions from the staff's perspective, I think it was more informational based on what the information received a few weeks ago, how the process worked, but it wasn't a revision of the current process that could be done surely at another time. If that's what we really focus on this project.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. And just really take the opportunity to express the gratitude to take a deeper dive into our process. This is not every day that we get this request. So we're, we're excited about the opportunity to really showcase what we do throughout the process. And I will add a, just my, how proud I am of our team, tip to tail. You'll see that and, and we'll discuss that a little bit more, particularly the focus on, you know, public safety and our focus on making sure that, you know, things are built right and that they're occupied safely to the community. Also take just a moment, really excited about having Ted Brandbold on board, on board with us. Take the opportunity to introduce him as our new commercial projects manager. You know, Ted is a former mayor himself, as well as an architect, a professional architect. And he's really adding a lot of value. And so grateful to have him on in, in this particular project as well, just the value he immediately added to help facilitate it along and, and make things happen. With that, I'm going to turn the, the presentation over to Caleb.
Mr. Mayor, Caleb, will you bring the other microphone to the centers? Well, both are fine. Just want to make sure it gets you.
Mayor, council, pleasure to be in front of you. I don't know how much of a presentation this is, just more of a discussion and as Cameron mentioned, maybe a peek into how we, the process works and using Orchard Park as, as that example. Cameron mentioned transportation elements. I'm kind of, I'm definitely going to weave that into my part of this. But also just talk about how planning, legal, the applicant, you know, kind of how the sausage is made really. Going from the hearing to a development agreement and then making sure that those development agreements provisions are, are carried through throughout the process. Councilman Borton just mentioned that he reviewed the record. There's a long record on this project, right? I mean, it was the P and Z three, four times continued remanded back. An extensive record there. At the end of the day though, motions are very important. I guess that's what I kind of want to lead with. There's a lot of things that were discussed on this project. What makes it into the findings and the development agreement is what's most important, not what was talked about during the hearing and maybe what I thought was going to happen. But making the motion clear, and we try to do that as staff sometime is to prod you a little bit. Did you mean this when you said that in your motion? Or can you clarify is, is traffic calming a requirement or is that you hope to see it or how, you know? So sometimes we try to prod you, but that is very important and you kind of see that a little bit in this project. There were some things discussed through those multiple hearings that a lot of it made it into the findings and the development agreement. Some of it may not have, and maybe you thought that they were there or should be there. So I just want to kind of lead with that a little bit. Timing also was important in this case in that when council heard this project, the STARs agreement was not yet done with ITD, hadn't been executed yet. There was discussions. But council actually acted on this project two days before that was executed with ITD. So I'm sure that the applicant knew generally what the terms are going to be because again, it was executed just a couple of days later, but we did not have that. We as the city, we as the public, we didn't know what, what all the terms are going to be in that STARs agreement for a couple of days later. And so phasing, I guess, is where I want to start with Chindon because there was a lot of talk about what the applicant was proposing to do to Chindon. And that was both onsite or their frontage improvements and that first mile from Linder back to Meridian and then Meridian to Locust Grove. And they had committed to do both of those. And in fact, in some of their presentation, even they had some of the draft phasing plan, do this now, future improvements out to Locust Grove. Nothing that I found in that record, and I'll be honest, I didn't read every word from all seven hearings that happened. But I did go through a lot of it and found their presentation and there's exhibits that show, you know, that they're, they're going to do this with first phase priority occupancy. And this is a future phase. We're committed to do it, but it won't be done day one. So that's kind of how the, the development agreement reads. If, if you've looked at that is, you know, they're, they're committing to do that and they need, that needs to be done, but within the timeframes as required by ITD and ACHD for those improvements. That also applies to some of the traffic calming I mentioned earlier, like at Plaza, Bergman, Bacall, as allowed by ACHD and FIRE. The other thing that I want to just draw your attention to, because I don't know how much of this you understand, but we do have in our, in our code, we do allow projects, certain elements of projects, non-life safety elements of projects, so fencing, landscaping, amenities to be bonded for, a surety provided to the city guaranteeing that they will go in. And we can grant them occupancy up to 180 days, roughly six months to, to open a project, to occupy a building up to that amount of time and not have those improvements on the ground. And that's something that's both in the development agreement and again, in city code in this instance. Sometimes weather, you know, prohibits somebody from installing some landscaping. And we will do a 60-day, okay, you provide us 110% of whatever your landscape contractor says it's going to cost to put those in and give them a certain amount of time, hoping that the weather will turn and they could put them in. A few years ago, fencing, you couldn't find a fencing contractor. And so we recognize that and we want to get these businesses or even homes occupied. So those are some of the things and I'm largely here to answer any questions you may have about that process. But planning's role in this again, starts with the hearings, writes, writes staff report, work with legal on the findings and the development agreement terms that then come back to you roughly two or three weeks later. And then when we get called to do a final inspection, say, oh, you're missing these trees or whatever, the applicant, you know, can post a surety for some of those types of things and we can still work with our building official and recommend that they issue a temporary certificate of occupancy or a final CO if we have a surety even with that guarantee that those improvements will be completed later on. So we're not a staff, I guess, I'd, I'd kind of put it this way. You know, when you're going through these hearings, you know, you assume, I do, that all those things get completed before occupancy. But sometimes circumstances arrives and we work with an applicant to make sure again, first and foremost, life safety is not compromised. But if there are some certain improvements that aren't yet installed and there's a comfort level that they will be, we can and we will, we have anyways, worked with them to provide a financial surety that guarantees that those improvements will go in in a timely manner. And that's the case with this project. We had that both in the development agreement that section 12 talks about install or bond these things. And that's, that's what we did in this case and recognize that there's still some landscaping that's done in a STARs agreement. But we had heard from both the highway district and ITD that they were okay with Wink opening, that they were satisfied with the phase one improvements for roadway improvement. So again, I can stand for questions if you want to get more specific on any concerns you have with how things played out here. I don't know if you want to hear from Bruce or Ted first, I can hang out, but that's generally how projects work is, is we do inspections, we, we work with our, our building official to let them know, yep, everything's done and complete. We don't have any concerns or hey, these things are still outstanding, but they're non-life safety. And we're okay, if you're okay, building official with issuing an occupancy out there. So. That's again, what happened in this case.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Um, so I'll repeat a little bit of the, I had a conversation with Caleb earlier today, but I, I don't doubt that staff followed like the proper process and procedure. I think there might be some elements we could work on. I think there's a little bit of a disconnect where maybe council thought that issuance of a CO or a TCO was like the hammer or the enforcement mechanism that we had to make sure that the road was completed. And I mean that in a very broad sense, when in truth, these other agencies determined when the road was substantially completed, right? And so we didn't really have control over that determination and maybe that wasn't the right, you know, kind of mechanism to use to ensure that that happened. My concern is just going forward. If council intends for something big to happen, that's outside of our control. And we have a lot of public input and some things either not going to happen the way that we thought or is not going to happen at all. I just think on those files, we need a way to have a project update so the public can understand more detail. For example, I think if in our meeting on June 1st, the discussion was more along the lines of in all likelihood, we've issued a TCO for them to stock the store, will likely issue another one so they can open the store. Because these two agencies have determined that the roadwork is substantially complete. And here are the items that are not complete and why we think that's okay. You know, if we had an update more like that, then I think that just helps the public's expectation be in further alignment and our expectation be in alignment with the project. So my concerns are not about our own process. My concerns are mainly like communication oriented around a project that has a lot of eyes on it. When it's a hot potato and we think we're going to get a lot of feedback. When it's a hot potato and we think we're going to get a lot of feedback that we have a way to get updates. On the record for people.
Sure. Did you have any response to that or comment than asking that you must? I'm just wondering if you did.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I appreciate the comments and yes, communication is is key. You know, we weren't a staff. We weren't trying to hide anything from council. You know, we even talked about, you know, the scope of of that June 1st meeting was was talking about the use of that building and not getting too far off track from what was noticed for the hearing at that meeting. But knowing that they weren't going to have, knowing that for the Winco project, not 100% of that was going to be complete before they wanted to stock the shelves and open, open the store. We had had communications with them and we're working towards that to say, okay, but you need to have these things done if you even want to temporarily be in there because these are the the key things from our standpoint and the things and how, again, within the framework of the development agreement and the conditions. So your point's well taken about communication and I guess why I had the the quick sidebar there. Oahu High School. We're not, I'm not proposing to give you that communication update just now, but but a little bit. That's coming. When that was approved by council, there were many roadway improvements that were required to be done before occupancy of that school. They're not going to be done. Do we not issue a TCO out there? That was, that was the intent. That's what we wanted to happen and the intent was good. The school that couldn't get anybody to bid on the roadway projects. So do we now not have a school year out there? And and I'm saying that somewhat facetiously, but we're working with them too, right? I mean, there is this expectation and there was, that's an that's a real issue that was talked about out there, but what do you do when you get to this point when the high school's 99% done and school starts next month? But there's a DA provision in here that says that that intersection needs to be improved, it isn't. Does we not issue occupancy? Sorry.
I mean, it's, it's, it is a valid question and and a lot of things and, you know, I think this is where it's interesting for community development to balance the needs and expectations of council and the community. And and those that are receiving the benefit of becoming open and how do you effectively manage that when you see, I mean, we visibly see the work is being completed, but may not be completed on a specific date and what is the impact of that decision? We we have seen some businesses, Costco was a great example that had every intention of doing an opening on a certain day and we said, no. Yeah, and and they knew they couldn't meet that as well. And so they reset their date because they couldn't meet the was it, was it the DA provisions at that point in time? Cause that reset, I know that there was those elements. So what is that balancing act? Because it's not 100% clear where that line shall always be. Intention versus restrictive.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, just in the Councilwoman Schrader's point again, it does make it even more difficult when there's a provision put in the development agreement. That is on a third party agency or something we don't even really control and when they say that it's substantially complete, you know, what maybe we don't even know really what's outstanding there. Sometimes, so it is difficult and it's something we're having internal discussions. How can we tighten that up a little bit more to make it clear? Even when we're working through this, what was the intent of council? And how can we work with our partner agencies? And is that even the best place to put something? Because again, we can't necessarily enforce that anyways. If we don't get anything from ACHD saying it's complete, how are we supposed to check that off? And we can't make them tell us that it's complete or not, that they work with us well, but it it is difficult again to her question, you know, how do we avoid this in the future and communicate and and understand and what are, where are the appropriate places? Just one more final, we don't have many hammers. When we get to this point in the process, occupancy is it. I can't think of anything else we can do as a stick or, you know, anything to withhold or not issue or however you want to couch that, that again, I think the city's protected in that we hold a financial surety for those things and we aren't letting anybody out of anything. It may be delayed longer than what their original intention was, but no one's getting away or out of making those improvements. They they still have to be done. Just may not have been done in the sequence and the timing that most everyone envisioned when the conditions were instituted in the first place.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you, Caleb, for your presentation. Good to see you. You know, I I feel like we're not talking about the applicant's role in all of this and, you know, in my opinion, the applicant needs to be pushing the cart. In regard to getting all of the agencies to be responding. If I'm the applicant, I'm actively contacting any of the other transportation agencies to find out what they would consider a complete. Where their stance is and providing that information to the city if necessary. If I have a deadline to meet. I'm doing that and I'm involved in the process actively. So I'm curious if the planning department is not seeing that happen. I really don't feel like it's necessarily the city's responsibility to be calling all the other departments to make sure that those portions of the project are, I may be way off on that. The second thing I would say is if there, if we have a project that's as substantial as Oahu High School, for example, and I know we're not making a decision on that this evening. But I feel like if they want to, if they want to proceed with an occupancy certificate and there's something not completed, like an intersection, we're not talking about landscaping, we're not talking about. Then they either need to come and apply for a DA modification if that's permissible. Which again, that's not going to probably be processed before the school year starts. But I'm not comfortable with allowing for something that significant to not have not happen. Now, again, we're back to the conversation of in the planning department's judgment. When do they recommend that to the applicant and when don't they? So I would also agree that if we could give any guidance to that, that would be helpful, but it's it is so much of a case by case basis, but I can say for you know, for myself and I'm sure I'm hoping for my fellow council members that you know, if the planning department needs to come to the mayor and council president and have that conversation about what about this one particular application? Maybe that's the route that we go when we have something that's bumping up against a deadline.
So Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, I'm going to let Ted and I think Bruce back to Orchard Park were very involved. So the first part, your first question, I think they could probably tackle the best. The second one, I mean, sometimes we know, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we just called, get called for an inspection or they say, hey, we're trying to open up, you know, it's Friday at 4:30. And we want to have our ribbon cutting tomorrow. Can you come give us occupancy? Oh, by the way, we don't have our landscaping done. So sometimes we get surprised, sometimes we know. Again, both of the projects we've been talking about just now, Winco was in fairly early communication with us and and communicating and and good, good communication lines, at least from my standpoint, and I'll let these gentlemen talk a little bit more about that. And same with Oahu, right? They haven't asked for that, but they know that they aren't going to be there. The stars aren't aligning where they're going to have everything done. So they've been in communication with us too. But again, that's not always the case. And and just by the way, I tend to agree with you. That's a, that's a big deal. Not having intersections done because that was a lot of what was talked about at the public hearings and making sure that at least this minimum level of roadway improvements were out there beforehand. And I'll just say I have talked to the Winco folks and that's why June 1st, it kind of was this convoluted, well, should you ask for a DA mod just to clear it up just because, you know? That that seems to be cleanest. It's transparent for everybody. Here's where we're at with our process. We're not trying to get out of doing the improvements, but man, they aren't going to be done prior to occupancy. Is that okay, council? Sometimes we don't have that three or four weeks so to notice a development agreement modification. So we're trying to, again, internally, we're trying to improve that process. We're not trying to hide the ball from anybody. We can you know, we'll work on those lines of communication even with council and what, you know, when that's appropriate to bring to you. But we do surety for some of these improvements. And again, I'll just before I turn, you know, if there's something you really want to see done before occupancy is done on a project, just make that clear in the motion, in the, you know, development agreement or whatever, this isn't, don't, don't let them bond for this. This needs to be done. 100% signed off, completed before occupancy. Because we'd have a pretty template that we have with legal that basically says unless you bond for it, put it in. If you don't want that to happen, then please make that explicit going forward. So.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Caleb teed that up really well. We we refer to those Fridays as hair on fire Fridays and it usually always happens at 4:30 on a Friday. Somebody's got a grand opening and they come in and they want occupancy and they've still got inspections that haven't happened. So typically in our department, everybody drops what they're doing and we try and make it happen. But in this particular case with Winco. Winco representatives were very engaged with our staff. They saw the writing on the wall, you know, they knew that they had a proposed grand opening date. They knew the status of the improvements because they stayed very plugged in with the developers representatives onsite. One of the, one of the greatest benefits we had on this project was the addition of a commercial projects manager, bringing Ted Brandold on board. Ted was was very engaged with with those folks. He was I don't know how many meetings he went to, but he was there probably three times a week in their job trailers. Talking with them, talking about status of of the roadway improvements. We, you know, we issued this permit for Winco. Based on the the allowance from council and mayor. When the plat came through, you allowed one building permit prior to the recordation of the plat. So they they started their construction. While the development was still under, under construction and that's always a risky move. You know, and in this case, there were some delays that happened with Linder Village. Unfortunately, everything kind of came together right at the end. So we did, I mean, our staff found ourselves in the position of having to kind of thread the needle. As Cameron mentioned, you know, our greatest concern is life safety. We're not going to proceed with allowing people to occupy a building either temporarily or permanently. Unless we have 100% life safety concerns addressed and signed off. So that was the case with with this building. That building was 100% signed off by everybody. We unfortunately had improvements with Chindon that were not to the point where we could allow full occupancy. And so through this process, we did issue three separate temporary CFOs. Each one of those had very specific criteria. This is what you're allowed to do. And it had an expiration date and those expiration dates were coordinated with the applicant and their contractors. On certain milestones that they were, they were shooting for, you know, it was X, Y, and Z improvements on Chindon will be done by this date. So we set an expiration date. There's a check in. So that does have a couple of slides to show you to kind of talk about the CO and TCO process and what they're used for.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Pro.
We had a difficult time here and Bruce there about halfway through what he was sharing. I don't know if it's a microphone issue or not.
It's Bruce, you know, taller than the microphones and not getting down low. So well we'll do, do better to make so you can hear yourself in the room.
Actually. Press the arrow there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Pleasure to be here with you this evening. I was asked to give you a little bit of information in regards to the difference between a TCO or temporary certificate of occupancy and a certificate of occupancy. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this. I can, I can do a deep dive or I can get to the, get to the heart of it if you'd like. Really what, there, there's not much difference between the two. And really, let's see if you look at probably the fourth page there. Let me see if I can get to it. Right here, actually, the notes at the bottom, really. The TCO, both the TCO and the CO require all life safety requirements to be met. And and operational, the project construction is substantially complete. And this means that that the building is able to be used for its intended purpose. So both of them have the same requirements there. What the TCO allows us to do is actually allow for items that are not complete, that are not life safety issues. But but allows for occupancy still. So then the next page would actually take this and I know I'm really abbreviating this. And if you have any questions on any of the other stuff, we can get to it, but the next page has some possible improvement measures that we could look at here. And we should, we should look at moving from a practice of TCO issuance. To a more of a focus on getting to the full certificate of occupancy on these projects. Certificate of occupancy should actually only be initiated in extraordinary situations. And we should be again, pushing for the full certificate, certificate of occupancy. Development agreements actually tend to be a little bit of a problem. I think Caleb had gotten into this a little bit. When we start embedding things into our development agreements. Such as requirements for roadway completions and landscape and things like that. It gets a little difficult and TCOs were never really meant for that. It's really a life safety issue for the building and within the perimeters of that building. So what we, what we should be doing is really tying anything in regards to improvements. That still need to be done into the surety process or bonding process for the projects and making sure that we've we've got a strong process in that regards, but I think it would help tremendously. As as was said, we're looking at a very similar situation here in Oahu, Oahu he right now for the high school. And we've got to, we've got to get some kids into a high school with, with roadways that probably aren't going to be complete, but I don't know, there any, any questions I can answer for anybody? I'd be happy to do so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Ted. Yes. It sounds like there's, there's two different paths that we're talking about or two different concerns. One concern would be whether or not a council's motion accurately reflects the requirements that have to be done. And if we might miss an emotion that they, you know, an application shall do X by Y date. And that goes in the DA and if we miss it. Then we lack the potential hammer to require it to be done. So that's one area that I think we're talking about. Whether or not a certain component of a project is required or can be bonded for is really nothing that we ever generally address in our motions. But the, but the second path is one that I've heard highlighted where there may be a provision in a DA that they shall do X by Y date. But there's some disconnect in when and if the city is going to enforce it. And take the the nuclear option to never grant a CO because it's not been done. Not allow a school to be open, for example. So are we talking today about making sure council motions include DA provisions that allow you to drop the hammer is not the correct way, but allow the city to really hold an application's feet to the fire. Or are we talking about scenarios where we have the ability to hold the application's feet to the fire, but there's some disconnect in how early in that process we're made aware of. Hey, they're behind. They're supposed to do X by this date. It's in the DA, but they're not going to make it. What do you want to do? Though I see two different concerns being raised. Is that an accurate summary?
It's an accurate summary of what you've got, what, but what? How do I go about this? How do I go about this? Two factors here is a lot of time is really the clarity of what the council's motion is, is, and, and what the council expects. And whether that is actually fully and accurately portrayed in the development agreement. Right? That's one, that's one issue, but, but but we're also, as Caleb touched on, we also shouldn't be as a city necessarily embedding a lot of like the ACHD and, and ITD requirements in that DA. I mean, we have no enforcement arm against them. And, and we can't necessarily make that happen. The, the potential you have there as a council, I'm going off a little bit, but the the potential you have there as a, as a council here is setting up something that, that can't be met. Developers are going to realize that. And, and, and by setting some of these, these conditions into the DAs is actually hindering developers' desire or to, to do projects.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
To that point though, if developer says, I can't open, or, or we say, hey, you can't open for this particular reason until that intersection is done. Just you can't. We, we, we're not going to approve an annexation because that issue is critical. The developer says, I get it. I agree. I cannot open and it gets put into a DA. And it's a voluntary agreement that I am forever hamstrung. Even if it's a third party agency and there's factors outside met control. It seems like those, those scenarios where that occurs, it's eyes wide open. City understands and the city approves it because it, because it might be a denial, for example. If that condition isn't included, but because of that condition, understanding their strings, the, the applicant is in agreement that it is clear, but it's the second problem that I was talking about. And now it's where are we in the process where the city would ultimately enforce that provision? And, and, and say, this example, you don't get a CO. And if, and if that third party agency is delayed twenty years, you don't get a CO for twenty years. Unless you come apply to modify the DA, articulate the reasons why these circumstances are different. That seems like we've got a mechanism to do it, but.
You, you had, I mean, you, to some degree, I mean, yes, you can take that hard line and, and say, okay, you're not going to open, but had, say, for instance, let's just take Winco. All right. As, as a, as an example here, had we ta- if we take the hard line in a DA that necess- you want me to go there? That isn't necessarily clear. All right. Winco is going to come at us and say, you know what? I am substantially complete. I, I deserve a full certificate of oc- excuse me, certificate of occupancy because they, again, the TCO and CEO are basically the perimeters of that building. And that's it. And so we've got somebody there sitting there that's going to come after us because they can't open because we're enforcing you know, a provision in the DA that says the roadway's got to be complete. And not, I'm not saying that's a situation because I think in this particular DA, there was some ambiguity.
And maybe I'm, maybe I'm Captain Obvious, the one that's just kind of making this connection, but you know, the DA and the, and the TCO don't always apply at the same entity. And that's what occurred in this situation is Winco was not subject to the, to my knowledge, Winco didn't sign the DA.
No, it was a developer of the side of the.
Yeah. So they're not, they're not beholden to this. It's the developer. This is the one that's being held, have to be held accountable compared to the individual that's there and being
Which is another layer.
Which is another layer. And quite frankly, Caleb kind of mentioned this before. It's almost by approving something to take, to start developing first before the process had enough, you know, we got out at, under our skis by approving one building early to a certain extent. I mean, if you didn't approve that one building early, you may or may not get there, but the offset improvements are always going to be a separate element. So even for council, do you want us, and for staff motion, do you want them to say that the road improvements need to be substantially complete as determined by the roadway agency? You want that clarity in your motions if you're going to tie road improvements to projects. That at least gets it to the point where we understand what that means in theory, even though I think it only matters where whoever we talked to at ACHD was substantially complete means. I don't know. They got a definition. My knowledge. Am I, am I missing? Is that, at least we understand the difference, but do we agree on that point? The DAs and TCOs may not even go to the, be applying to the same group.
Mr. Mayor, I, I could probably add a little bit to that because I, I agree with you. I mean, again, and you've hit it right on the head. I mean, again, the the applicant and the DA here is the developer of the shopping center, not Winco. A Winco might be paying for some of it, but they're not, they don't have any control over the project itself of the roadways. In this particular development agreement, we actually did tie the certificate of occupancy to the substantial completion of the roadway. It isn't always that way. You have to remember, a development agreement is merely a contract. So we only have an enforcement tool through either a contract by basically suing them to enforce the agreement or by de-annexing the property. And that's really our choices in the contract. So we don't have the same level of hammer unless we put it in there. And we actually did here in this case, but not to make it more confusing, because I know it sounds pretty confusing already. I reviewed the minutes of the, the, the hearing that approved this project. No one talked about Meridian to Locust Grove in this discussion. All of this conversation regarding Chindon was access from Chindon into the site because of trying to take access off of Fox Run and off of Linder as the primary entrances into this facility. They were asking for a variance to allow them access. We tied it to the similar approval we did for Costco, two miles down the road or a mile down the road. And no one was talking about the, as a whole. Now, as Caleb said, there were a number of hearings. So I understand that that bigger discussion of Chindon is a, and this is a subset of that discussion, but it wasn't a specific requirement here. In this particular one, it was a little a little different in how the motion was made. Because Councilmember Palmer actually brought up some, some talking points of what he felt was important. There was further discussion. He made the motion to approve based on what he said ten minutes ago. Asked me, it looked at me and said, do you have it? I did. At least I think I did. I repeated it back. Like, I think these are the points. Everybody went, yep, that's right. And then we voted. So we do as a stat, as Cameron and Caleb and Bruce said, we try very hard to make sure we catch your points. But again, we review Dean's minutes. We review the tape. We go back and look to make the findings. And then again, the last step is, comes back to you. So we do try to get all those points, but this particular one, we did tie that occupancy. But again, it was the completion as determined by the road agencies who were the authority over the road. And they did give us the approval that to their, to their expertise, the roads were safe for use to use for this project. So that is the only, we don't have road engineers. We don't have a way to supersede that. So if the road agency says the roads are, are safe and acceptable to us, they're safe and acceptable. I mean, that's, that's the only way we really can do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I think the ultimate goal this evening is just to provide some transparency to, to some folks and to ourselves who are, who are interested in this process and why it quite wasn't where we thought it was as a council. And so I appreciate the dialogue and I appreciate the clarity. But just to confirm, Bill, so what you're saying is in, in Councilman Palmer's final motion, there was no, there was nothing in that motion that said that the DA or the, the CEO to Winco was tied to the completion of Chindon from Linder to Meridian or Locust Grove, either one.
It was not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cameron.
Think it. Bill brings up some, some good points, you know, that we continued that Linder Village hearing.
Right.
Only talk about a particular piece of the road, which is I think why we didn't have a lot of discussion in it. And I, like Mr. Neri, I went back and I, I read the minutes and I said, I don't remember some of that. So I went and watched it. You get even a different feel watching it than reading it. And I think, you know, this has been a really, really good conversation, but I, I do think there's some opportunities for us to improve our processes coming out of that. One, I think we're, we're already doing a really good job of we're not going late at night anymore on city council meetings. I think we were, there's another late night after a series of late nights and those were when these things tend to fall off. And we think things are captured in a motion and maybe they're not. A suggestion would be, and maybe Mayor, this is a question maybe for you or you and council president's staff to, to consider. I think particularly coming off of contentious public hearings, when the council has made a motion, perhaps adjacent to the findings that we approve, a council member should be able to maybe request an executive memo that outlines the highlights of what is captured within those findings. I like that for a couple of reasons. One, it allows us to come back after the meeting and review and make sure, hey, what I thought made sense up here in my head is actually captured here. Two, I think it makes it easier for our public to understand that. While I know we've got a lot of great engineers and planners and attorneys who live in the city of Meridian, that's ultimately who we're working for is the public. And I think making it as easy for the public to understand the actions that are happening up here can give them greater confidence in decisions that, that we're doing. I don't think we need to do it on, after every land use application. I think if there's one that's contentious and the mayor or the council feel like, boy, we'd like to capture that for the public that we could request it and do it. So that's something, Mr. Mayor, I'd encourage you and your staff to talk about if that's something that is feasible, isn't overbearing on staff's time. I think it also would allow us as council to make sure, yep, what I thought we approved on Tuesday night is actually what we approved. Just some thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman Cameron. I'll really defer that to Bill on that element about what makes sense. I mean, and I would suggest to that point, council include that in your motion of an expectation. Cause I don't want to be the one to determine what's contentious and what's not contentious. I'd rather council agree. And if it's big, if it's contentious enough and big enough, honestly, what you're asking for doesn't seem like to be that much more. Cause they're already doing the work.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe to add to what Councilmember Cavanagh said, we do that a lot internally. I mean, we have a lot of conversations of did they say this? Do we add this? Do we bring it back? Do we get clarification? So if it's on your radar as well, that would help us because we do that a lot between the planning staff at my department. And like I said, we go back and listen to the tape or we watch the video and say, yeah, they said this, they didn't say that, but it might've been something that was said an hour in and an hour later. It was still part of the essence of what we're talking about, but it wasn't specific. So we, we just want to get it right. And again, I think we can, we can tell many times what we need to bring it back. But again, if it's on your folks radar to say, we'd like to see this again before we get to the findings, please just make sure you tell us that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Cavanagh.
And Cameron, your staff worked really, really hard and it is a really, really challenging job trying to translate to the council and then decipher what the council has said and maybe a long motion or a conversation to be captured. At the same time, you're also trying to, you know, provide good customer service to, to the applicant and also great customer service to our citizens. So I recognize, I hope you don't feel like this is a Monday morning quarterback situation. I just think that this was a big scenario that shined a light on areas where again, I think you're taking some good feedback away that staff can better support the council and the public. There was a council can do a better job of making sure that we're providing clarity to, to make it easier for you guys as well.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do appreciate that Councilman Cavanagh, that, you know, your conscientious of staff time. I mean, if we were having to do this level of review on every application, that's, that's undue burden, but we, we support the idea of making sure we get these motions right upfront that we can then implement them and execute them to everyone's expectation on the long run.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I, I just wanted to say thank you to staff as well for, you know, bringing clarity to this, to this topic. I and I agree, and I want to echo the words of council, Councilman Cavanagh and say, this is wasn't we didn't want to make this be a gotcha moment for sure. I, we just wanted to be as transparent as possible. And to bring clarity to this situation was a big, it was a big application that went a long time and had many different layers to it. So thank you. And looks like, you know, we need to do a better job at our end to be more clear on our motions. And so going forward, we'll do a better job with that.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, you know, I just appreciate planning staff's time on this to kind of go through it and, and try to figure out, it's always good to improve, right? I mean, we, we as council have a lot of work to do. It sounds like in clarifying our motions and but one thing I just want to say, if you have a situation like Ojai High School, and it's pretty clear just in your judgment that what council intended and what the public heard versus what is going to happen, that there's a big disconnect. It's not just about managing the planning process. We have to manage the political process of making sure the public is informed about something that may not meet what they expected originally. And it's, I think it needs to come back before us. Either as an update, maybe you follow your approvals the way you normally do, but there needs to be some way for that to get on the record and, and, and provide everybody with an update, in my opinion.
Councilwoman Scher, I, I would agree. And I think there's a difference between what is, you know, I think Ojai High School, I, I heard about this first time yesterday about this popping up. And I think we need to have an understanding about what is our process moving forward with this, either through this process or otherwise. So I'm, that's, I'm going to task you all to please come up with a plan by tomorrow. If we have to have public hearings, if we have to do specific things to make it legal. But I think from a general standpoint, I, I hope what you heard is we stay within the legal confines. I don't know that there's been anything that I'm aware of that has ever been approved that's been outside the approval of our process and otherwise, whether or not people thought that's what was approved. That's, that's a different issue and that's always going to be hard to Monday morning quarterback for lack of a better term. But I, I hope you don't take away from this that we are approving stuff outside of what has been approved in the DA and signed off on by parties. That is not the case, but the Ojai High School is one that is a little bit now different that we're going to have to figure out what is the appropriateness of what decision needs to be made. And we need to make that quickly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Have a question for Mr. Neri. If there was a, a situation in which the staff and, and legal didn't, didn't really truly feel like they could get a grasp of council's intentions, would, would that then be put back on the agenda for the following week and discussed and, and clarified, clarifying questions be asked or how would that work?
Oh, Mr. Members, the council, council pro, absolutely. I mean, if we, again, we, we review it the next day and as they're trying to craft the findings, planning will reach out to, to my department to ask, does this make sense? Is this what happens? Usually, I'm usually the one here. So I'm usually the one that said, no, we didn't say that. But yes, if we're not clear in the slightest, we would bring it back. If we're not clear, but we think we are, we're going to make sure when the findings come on, we're going to highlight them, pull them off the agenda and say, this is how we wrote them. Is this right? So if we're not even sure how to write them, we'd bring them back before that. We think we are and we've looked at the video. We're pretty comfortable, but we still want to be sure. Yes, we will absolutely ask because again, we're just trying to get it right.
Thank you.
Councilman Borden.
We, we, Mr. Mayor, we finished with this discussion.
To my knowledge, unless there's any else. Thank you, Cameron and Caleb and everybody.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
There's an item on the, on the agenda. It was item eight. Unfortunately, some things happened that were unforeseen and we, the presenter or presenters aren't available for this evening. So I'd like to amend the agenda and strike item eight and we can put this on either next week's agenda or the week after.
Mr. Mayor, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
I will second the motion.
Motion second to, I kind of may, is there a discussion? If not, I'll favor sing by my saying aye. Those they, you guys have it and the item is striking for the record.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session, Pareto code seven, four, dash, two, zero, six, one, A.
Second the motion.
Looks like I, when you do D two.
I will second that motion.
Yes.
With A and D.
I have a motion of second. Is there a discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden, Cavanagh. Pro.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogan.
I.
I.
Alize, and we will go into executive session.
Council will go ahead and call this meeting to order for the record it is July 13 2021 at 6:02pm. We will begin this evening's very good city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance if we all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is the community invocation which tonight will be delivered by Dale Newberry with Ten Mile Christian Church. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Dale.
It's community. I pray your blessing on this council that you would give them a measure of discernment and judgment. And that their decisions would be true and just. Lord, we we thank you that you put governments in place. Now you give us the opportunity to serve in many ways. Thank you for these people who have devoted their time and energies to this community. And God, we we just thank you for the place we live. And Lord, we pray that we'll just do our best to keep it clean and and a place that that people desire to live. God, we're we're so grateful for what we have and and this area. And we just thank you for all that you do and the way you bless all of our lives. God, we we thank you for the blood of Jesus who unites us all. In his name, amen.
Thank you, Dale.
Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
We do have an executive session scheduled for item five. I don't believe we need that executive session anymore. I think we handled our business in the first executive session, so I move that we strike item five, our executive session from the agenda. And with that, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is agreed to as amended. Is correct. Do we have anyone set up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, so the first item up is a resolution, a resolution number 212276, appointing Tom Audi to the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Hopefully, Tom is a familiar face to this council. He was a wonderful employee here, also the character Trash Talk Tom, who we still own the rights to, but having him back on SWAC actually gives us a little bit closer connection and tie to him from that standpoint, but he's moved on over to do solid waste work over with Ada County. And so this is part of, you know, that ongoing relationship that we have with Ada County as it relates to our solid waste, as well as a knowledge and base of a great Meridian resident who has long ties to our Public Works Department as well. So it's, you know, with my honor and pleasure to bring him before you for consideration to this appointment to the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Let me happy stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Are you looking for a motion?
If there's no questions, I would be happy to entertain a motion.
No questions for me, just to comment how much we love Tom. How how wonderful it will be to have him in that seat. And if there's no other questions, which I think everyone loves Tom and the work he's done for us, I move that we approve Resolution 2122-76 to appoint Tom Audi to seat nine on this All Waste Advisory Commission.
Second emotion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? If not, all's a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And I do not see Tom present for any comments this evening. And he was hoping to make it, but evidently wasn't able to. So with that, we will just send him along our best wishes and see him in an upcoming SWAC meeting or perhaps a presentation to council before we realize it. So moving on to item two, public hearing, which was continued from June 22 2021 for H 2021-0025. We will continue this public hearing and see if there are any staff comments.
Mayor, members of the council, I would imagine we're on the Tenet Meridian project. Perfect. Yes, I'm actually filling in for Sonia this evening. She's on vacation for two weeks. So I was waiting, making sure there wasn't anything else on the agenda before this project. But I wanted to let you know that you guys did continue this project from June 22. I had a chance to read through the minutes and saw that you guys had a really robust discussion about the ratio between commercial and residential in this particular project. So I do want to get everyone oriented to where the property is situated, what the land use types are, and then go quickly go through some of the changes the applicants proposed. And then let him go into more detail. So we did recite based on the discussion that occurred at the city council, the previous city council, there were some revisions to the concept plan. Staff did prepare memo and then forwarded on those changes to the public record to be included as part of the public record. And I'll go ahead and show those changes to you. So right now, this property is located on the southwest corner of Franklin and Ten Mile. You can see here on the future land use map, there is three land use designations on this property. We have mixed use commercial, high density residential, and then mixed use residential. You can see here the predominant, the predominant land use is mixed use commercial. It's currently RUT in Ada County, and the applicant is here tonight to request annexation into the city. So if you recall on the January or June 22 hearing, the original concept plan that was presented to you was the one on the left. It had 559 residential units and then approximately 147,000 square feet of commercial mixed use buildings on it. Based on those discussions, the applicant went back to the drawing board, came forward with a new concept that you see here on your right. They have increased the commercial mixed use portion of the development from approximately 147 to about 166K if I'm not mistaken. And then, but they've also kept the the number of residential units, so there's still 559 units as part of the revised plan. You'll also note that some of the big buildings have been reconfigured on the plan. There is more central open space between the R40 portion of the site and the commercial on the, where the Kennedy lateral comes bisects the property. And then again, smaller square footages, and then the applicants also propose more. I think there's been an increase in open space, but more parking has been added to the commercial portion and less parking has been removed from the multifamily portion. And there's a slide after this one that breaks down all the proposed changes as well. I'm just quickly summarizing them for you. I wanted you all to to see that visually, see the differences between the two plans. So again, here's the project summary for all of you to look at this evening. Again, on the top, the left side is what was previously proposed, and then the revised concept summary on the probably the middle of the slide here, and then the breakdown of those changes in more of a text form. I also wanted to remind the council, there's a couple items that if if you choose during your motion tonight, I want you to take under consideration a couple of waivers that were brought to your attention on June 22 as well. That had that one of those pertain to the number of access points that they were proposing to Franklin Road and Ten Mile. I believe during that discussion, it was shared with you that traffic study was accepted by ACHD and they did support the analysis in that traffic study. And they also supported these accesses to Franklin Road and Ten Mile. So if that's something that you support, we ask that you include that waiver as part of your motion. And then, as I mentioned, the Kennedy lateral bisects this property. A portion of it will be tiled and some of it will be left open. And the council or the applicant is seeking a waiver to keep the Kennedy lateral open. And then the the third part of your motion tonight, and it was, it's on your hearing outline, the staff is recommending a modification to IDA provision that's in the staff report, and that's highlighted in yellow on on your hearing outline tonight, allowing the applicant to get forward on development before plotting the property and that we would hold up occupancy on any structure on the site until the final plot was recorded. So with that, I'll go ahead and conclude staff's brief presentation on this application, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Bill, council, any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Bill, thanks so much. Just to confirm, so it looks like just back of the envelope, but approximately 11% more commercial compared to the square footage previous. Is that about right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's that sounds about right. It's about 18,000, 19,000 square foot increase based on what the applicant provided to us.
Quick follow up, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
And Bill, in your opinion, does that put us closer in alignment with the amount of commercial we would hope to see in this area once we take into account the flume that we have and everything? Is this, you know, kind of what we would, is this more in alignment with what we would expect?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Strater, I believe so. I mean, I think looking at the the past record and seeing what the discussion was about, you know, we can, staff convey to you that this is a guide. When we look at mixed use developments, when we look at the Ten Mile interchange specific area plan, we have to look at the area holistically. And if you look to the south of this property, there's quite a bit of mixed use residential that can occur and some more commercial that can occur in this area to help fuel some of the density that you see on that plan. So again, the comprehensive plan is a guide. Certainly, looking, I know I've met several times with this applicant on trying to get this concept plan in this best configuration that we can to make sure that it is consistent with that plan. So in staff's opinion, yes, we find it is consistent with not only land uses, but also the residential mix on it. And I think for me personally, I like that the that the council actually continued this because some of the suggestions you made have made this plan better, particularly with in regards to the open space between the larger buildings. And then having that another access out to Cobalt, I think will help circulation on this plan a lot better. So again, I have to commend not only the applicant for making the changes, but also this body in the council for recognizing that and having the applicant go back and fine tune the plan a little bit more.
That's perfect. Thanks, Bill. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Bill, I apologize. Could you go over for us again, you said there are a couple items that council needs to consider for alternative compliance to include in our motion. Would you run that by us one more time?
Happy to do that, Councilwoman Pro. So essentially, we need council's blessing on the access points to Franklin Road as you see them depicted on the concept plans. We need you to support the waiver to keep the Kennedy lateral open as a water amenity. And then we also want you to add a DA provision or modify DA provision to allow them to get started on development ahead of submitting their subdivision plan or recording a plot. And that the exact language is actually in the hearing outline in front of you.
Council, any additional questions? All right. Thank you. For the applicant, I'd like to come forward.
Good evening. Again, my name is Wendy Sharif. I'm a planner with JEB Engineers. My business address is 2760 Occasion Way. We're in Meriden, Idaho. 83642, and we've got our team is here again. I'm just going to kind of do the introduction. And we really want to thank you all for the recommendations we had for me last time. Once we, once we left the hearing and sat down and really looked at the changes, it's a much better plan than what we came here with. So thank you. I think the flow of the site is much better. I think the way we're dealing with with the multifamily, I think it's much more inclusive. I think it's much more in the spirit of what we wanted to do for this project. And and thank you for the push for increasing the commercial. I think it's good you guys had faith in us. I think it's a really good improvement. And I'm glad that we have increased the commercial on the site. So I think it really, it was, it was good. We're hoping to get through in one council hearing. Once we sat down and looked at the changes, we think it's a really, it's a much better design and it's going to be a much better functioning project. Thank you for the for the comments. So I have Wayne, we're just, who is our Thank you for the, for the comments. So I have Lane Borges, who is our architect, is going to walk through and, and some more detail for what the changes were. We also have Heath Clark here this evening, too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Lane Borges, representing Elk Ventures, 11500 Armor Court, River, California, 95670. Mr. Parsons already kind of stole my thunder a little bit in walking through some of the changes that we've made since we were here last time. But I'd like to maybe take an opportunity to, one, just review the comments that we had heard when we were here. An overall review of the changes and then quickly go through each kind of main element of the site and talk a little bit about what we, what we actually have done. The plan in front of you that shows the plan that we presented last time. The four elements that we went back to the drawing board on were, one, the amount of commercial space, the proportion of commercial to residential in the property, and I'll talk a little more in a second about specifically what was done there. Another element that was talked about that we clearly heard was the location of the commercial building that we had designated in the original plan as kind of our grocery store, which was on Ten Mile Road at the southeast corner of the site. We'll talk about where we moved that and why we moved it. The third element was the open space and how the high density buildings in particular were connected to the open space, or in the case of the original plan, not connected to the open space. And attempts to integrate them better so that the recreation areas really appeared and functionally served all aspects of the project a little bit better. And then the fourth was to continue our discussions with our adjacent property owner to the south on the alignment and the improvement of Cobalt Drive. So the plan that you're looking at now is the revised plan that's been submitted. And this plan does reflect all of the changes that we're proposing. As Mr. Parsons already suggested to you, we have modified the open space, particularly in the high density area. And I'll go through a direct comparison in a second to being shown there. We relocated the commercial building designated for our grocer up into the northwest corner of the property. And we have increased the commercial space by 18,775 square feet. And the actual calculation, if you exclude the square footage of the clubhouse, is we actually have a 14% increase in the amount of commercial space that's now being proposed for the project. So real quickly, I'd like to kind of walk through each area. We call these pods. So you'll see in this plan, a comparison of the proposed design of the pod on the left and the original on the right. So you'll see that we eliminated one of the residential buildings. And we basically moved the commercial building designated for grocery up into this location. One, and we're actually two reasons and two very helpful comments that were made at the last meeting. And that was that when you looked at the circulation of traffic coming to the grocery store and where the predominance of that traffic would circulate, a lot of that traffic is projected to go northbound on Ten Mile. And from the original location, that was a little more difficult maneuver to make. You had to kind of traverse through the whole site. And the building was located in an area of the site that had more access restrictions. The current location is at an access point that has full access. So we believe that ingress into the site for this use at that location, as well as egress, will be a significant improvement. The second pod was the pod in the middle, and you'll see that, whoops. Okay, in the original plan, we had two residential buildings there. One of the residential buildings has been redesigned, and we have added two additional mixed use buildings with commercial space on the ground floor and residential units above. The other two buildings are similar to the original plan. A sensitive mouse. Okay, our third pod, which is the pod at the intersection of Franklin and Ten Mile. We have changed some of our proposed uses there. We still have retained the mixed use building in that particular pod. We've increased the square footage of our commercial pad buildings. And we are now proposing a two-story commercial building to kind of frame that corner, designating it as a potential location for a financial related institution. So we're proposing and considering the possibility of having drive-through facilities there for drive-up tellers and transactions. The fourth pod along Ten Mile Road is actually probably the only pod that really doesn't have any significant alterations. We still have the two mixed use buildings that were originally proposed at that location, a commercial on the ground floor and residential above. And then the last pod, whoops. The last pod, again, you'll see on the right, the original location of the grocery store. And that's been replaced now with two-story commercial buildings and one-story commercial buildings. The proposed quick service restaurant that was originally in the design is also retained. The next component that we want to do a little look at is the clubhouse. And as you'll see, our flats buildings have retained their location. We've actually relocated the pickleball courts that were proposed and taken some of the open space that was in that area and integrated it into the space between the high density buildings. This allowed us to add a little bit of additional parking to better support the clubhouse and the residential units at that location. And the last location is the high density. So you'll see there's quite a change here. Unfortunately, I can't remember to give proper credit to the council member that made this suggestion to slide those two buildings along Cobalt together. One of the discussion points we had is that those buildings had originally been located there because of the specific plan recommendations for street forward design and placing the buildings as frames along the streets. So we were able to retain that and keep those buildings with the Cobalt frontage, but at the same time, move the parking that was between those buildings, basically on each side, and enlarge the parking areas to the east and west and create a very nice continuation of the open space that now flows from the recreation center and clubhouse down past a redesigned high density building that you'll see is now kind of a V shape and into the space between the two buildings fronting Cobalt Drive. So the result is the plan that you have before you of all those particular elements. Just wanted to flash also quickly back up that we've retained the concept that kind of drove this design was an emphasis on these vehicular and bicycle circulation, which you'll see with the red lines. So those are our kind of main streets, and those streets again are two-way traffic with bicycle lanes with parallel parking and street trees. So we just kind of affectionately call those kind of our internal mini main streets. And then down below, you'll see the secondary circulation that connects the high density building out to Cobalt and back up to the remainder of the site with several pedestrian crossings over the canal. And the last slide again shows the network of pedestrian activity and access that we have. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Heath Clark to provide some closing comments. I do also still have in this presentation, the renderings that were presented last time on the building architecture. I think the emphasis in this presentation tonight is kind of the site plan and the layout. But if anybody has any questions or comments, we do have those available. If anybody would like to revisit those at a later time. Thank you for your time.
Everyone, Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise with the applicant. And I just have a couple of quick items to wrap us up here. So one item that was discussed at the last meeting was the conversations with our neighbor to the south and how that's progressed. We've continued to have, to have those conversations. We're, I think, rowing in the same direction still. The one thing that we need to have be in order to finalize those conversations is a little bit more detail and engineering. And in order to work that into an agreement, and we're all headed in that direction. And I know Joanne Butler is here tonight, and she'll be able to speak to that. But I believe that we are in conceptual agreement as to the way this is going to go. We just need to have a little more detail. But just to remind the council, the, the concept there was to contribute ground there on the southeast and contribute to the cost of, of one half of the construction of the roadway on the south. So very simple parameters. We just need to get a little more detail to be, have a final agreement on that. In terms of other logistics, Bill mentioned the, the waivers. The one thing that I would just point the council to is that you already have in condition one C language dealing with the access points. So I don't think you need to have special, special language in your motion about that. Condition one C does approve those access points. And then condition one D, as Bill mentioned, we would ask language be added that I understand is highlighted in your report, that no certificate of occupancy for any structure will issue prior to recording of the final plat. And then the final element related to condition one E, which was the waiver related to leaving the Kennedy lateral open. So with that, we're happy to answer questions, but our group has worked really hard on this. I think Lane was, did some pretty inspired work based on the, the, the council's comments. And, and we do believe that this is an improved project that satisfies what the, what the council was looking for at our last meeting.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Heath, I have to agree with you and Lane's comments about a prior hearing. I was able to review it all and prep for today at prior hearing and as well as these changes. And, and the applicant for making these changes, but also the fellow council members up here, I think, had a really constructive discussion and provided some good direction. So it was, seemed to have been a very cooperative meeting on, just on June 22nd. So appreciate the direction from my colleagues up here, as well as the applicant's willingness to participate in those changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
The Councilwoman Borden said it well. The applicant really, we really, we really pushed on you guys, and we appreciate you listening to our suggestions. We know you spent an awful lot of time preparing this. I, I do have one question for you about the access points. Do you still have the slide that shows them as they're lettered? So that's what's in our notes here, and I wanted to take a look at those letters again. There were no changes made to that from the last hearing until today, correct? We're just reiterating to council that we need to not forget to make sure that's appropriately mentioned in the motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pro, that's correct. There's no proposed change on the accesses to Ten Mile Road and Franklin Road, which are the subjects of condition one D, which, as I mentioned, I think adequately defines the council's position that those accesses are approved.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up.
Councilman Pro.
So as far as the, the flow of traffic through here and pedestrian access, are, are the intersections, quote unquote, intersections going to have stop signs? Is there going to be posted speed limits? I mean, I, if I'm, if I'm envisioning this correctly, they will be, you know, there'll be enough traffic on here that it almost is like a local road. So can you talk with us about that as far as safety goes, as far as pedestrian crossing? And then this is not a consideration per se for, for my decision, but I just am curious if there was any consideration given to there being like a roundabout style where some of the intersections are versus potentially stop signs or whatnot. So can you talk with us about that?
Yes, we do anticipate that at the major intersections, there will be methods to control the traffic because the volume may dictate that without it, it would be unsafe. I don't think at this point in the concept plan, we've determined where's the best location, whether is it the north and southbound traffic that should be stopped, or is it the east and westbound traffic that should be stopped? We did consider briefly the idea of using roundabouts. It was, it's kind of a challenge because, one, they take up a considerable amount of space. And in our experience, roundabouts create actually a bit of a challenge for a lot of drivers that are unaccustomed to proper way to enter and exit roundabouts and actually can have a negative effect on circulation. Everybody's pretty familiar with a stop sign or a yield sign or more conventional methods. So we decided to go with that for our particular plan for that reason.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Lane and Heath and Wendy, I'm just like so happy and really like proud of this development and the direction that you're taking it with the feedback. This is a really great development and all, I'm really supportive and I'll be proud to have this development in our city. So thanks for taking a look at everything.
Councilmember Schrader, that's very nice.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
One question for you, Heath. It was mentioned of a land swap down there in Cobalt. Can you give us an update on what that contract looks like currently?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burn. So I've been having conversations with Joanne Butler, and she's here and she can speak on her. I won't put words in her mouth. But the, the general thought process that's been discussed amongst the principals is that the, the area, is this following my mouse bill or is it, oh, there it is. It's just very super sensitive. That there would be a swap for this area down here and then contribution for half the cost of Cobalt Drive. And then that, that agreement would be finalized as we have the specific engineering details associated with the preliminary plat.
Ethan.
Councilmember.
Any issues? I mean, with that agreement, is it going pretty smoothly with the neighbor?
No issues that I'm aware of. You know, we've, I've had a couple of conversations with Joanne. Like I say, I'll, I'll let Joanne comment.
Perfect. Thank you.
But I, I feel like we're rowing in the same direction, like I mentioned.
Councilman Borden.
Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Neri, I guess, and, and Joanne might talk about it as well. But the scenario of, of bad parade of horribles, if that doesn't happen, right, and it falls through, what happens to the lower right-hand corner?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borden, that, that piece is still included in the concept plan. It doesn't have a use associated with it. So I would anticipate that it would be part of the preliminary plat, just created as a parcel on its own. And then a use would have to be assigned to it. It's, it's more useful, frankly, to our neighbor to the south because of the configurations there. So we don't anticipate, we, you know, we think that this is going to go forward and that it would ultimately be part of another plan. But that's the, that's how we're seeing it.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up, and we can just kind of put a pit in it, but in that really unforeseeable rare chance that something doesn't work, right, this is the one chance to, to condition it somehow so it's not, you know, weeds or just burnt out.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borden, I would just say that it's not your only chance because we have to come back here at pre-plat. And so if we don't have this sorted out by pre-plat, then you'd have an opportunity to, but to impose specific conditions on that. But so we, we do have to come back before you. This is not the only bite at the apple. This is the annexation and rezone with the concept plan, so we know what we're dealing with. And so therefore, we can go, you know, invest the money, do all the engineering, have the detail, and then finalize an agreement.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clark, may anyone sign up to write testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we do. Joanne Butler.
Mayor, council members, thank you. Joanne Butler, 967 East Park Center Boulevard, representing the property owner that is immediately south of this project, known as the tenant Meridian. Little different take, for the record, we oppose the concept plan and will oppose the preliminary plat when that application is made if Cobalt continues to be shown as it is shown on the concept plan. This application for annexation and zoning appears to be premature. Perhaps it's appropriate to put this annexation and zoning application on hold until the detailed plat is also submitted. Last month, the council asked the applicant to go back and look at and redesign the multifamily. And of course, I'm just talking about this area to the south along Cobalt. The council will decide or perhaps whether this redesign meets some of the more welcome multifamily designs that you've had come before you, like the Seasons at Meridian and so forth. Development like that have set a bar, a new bar for Meridian. Development like that have set a bar, a new bar for Meridian. For us, this design does not meet that bar. The public road Cobalt should be on their property. They would have had to design those buildings much smaller. That is true, but they would have kept their development on their property. Not to be too facetious, but perhaps the applicant's design of their project. Using their non consenting neighbors property makes you want to perhaps slap your forehead because it does us. We told the council and the applicant at the last hearing that we would try willing to try to work out some kind of agreement between. The two of us that compensates our client for burdening their property. That hasn't happened and the detailed information that we've requested to try to draft an agreement. Has not been provided and perhaps that's because it's just not available yet. Which speaks to the prematurity of the project and why I ask that maybe this be put on hold until the plat is ready. And you can look at the plat and we can look at the details of that plat and how it affects our property together. The council should not approve this application, at least not where it abuts our client's property. On the basis that maybe and only maybe the neighbors will work out a road location and construction issue. There should not be any innuendo that the council is using its public process. To approve a concept plan that can only work if two private property owners agree outside of your public process. So we're asking you to hold off on the concept plan approval until the plat application is made. So that we have the detail to work together with property owners. Or in the alternative, please make it very clear to the applicant. That any approval you grant tonight and knowing in no way means. That you would accept a preliminary plat application that mirrors this concept plan that burdens our clients property without consent. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
Councilman Burt.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Are we going to get a deal? Yes or no?
If I if I don't know, I couldn't say today because I don't have the details.
Close?
We have had one conversation, I believe, one conversation and a couple of emails back and forth, and that's it.
So you're not close according to what you're saying.
Technically, no.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Joanne, at at some point, from my understanding from the first hearing is that Cobalt Drive. Where it ends up meeting with the property to the west will be on your. Client's property at some point. It's just a matter of how much is that correct?
Right. If you look at the site plan as it shows now, it shows Cobalt going straight across the property and truncating. Basically, north, south aligned with their western property line. We are going to have to take it straight down south from there. Whether that road is. There or on their property, just a little to the farther north, we're still going to have to take it south. So our contention is is this development ultimately should have been originally designed to. Have that road on their property per ACHD rules. Their buildings would have been smaller. That's true. And this is a use of our our client's property that they will look and try to work with them to be compensated. You know, and appropriately, but in the meantime, we just want to make it really clear that we oppose it as it is without those details in place. And so that we know exactly. How this is going to be developed.
Mr. Mayor.
House one Burt.
Sorry to be so frank with you.
I was, I hope.
Counsel, any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Senator, sign up.
There were no additional signups.
Is there anybody that would like to provide testimony on this item? At this time or anybody online that that would like to provide testimony? You're online, you'd like to provide testimony. We do have a couple of phone in callers. Mr. Clark, is it star? How do they notify us if they're on the phone?
It is star five or star nine. One will attempt to mute and the other will raise the hand. I don't know which is which.
Okay, if you if you would like to provide testimony on this item and you're on the phone. Star five or star nine or use the raise your hand function. See, nobody's wishing to come forward and with the applicant likes to come forward for. Final additional remarks.
Keith Clark, two fifty one East Front Street. This might be the most. Stunned that I've been in a public hearing before. Let me just make a couple of points. So Cobalt will be south of our property line. That is, it cannot continue through. The ten mile interchange specific area plan has Cobalt continuing west. It doesn't have it have it dropping south. There have been numerous conversations and in person conversation amongst the principals before the last hearing. The principal spoke again today. This was a huge, that testimony was a huge curve ball to us. I'll just make one point. The the alignment of Cobalt is set. It needs to align on our property on the east side. It needs to be off our property on the west side. What we've proposed in the first place, we thought was pretty equitable because we've got the portion of the property that includes the lateral crossing. What we've proposed is to make up for whatever is going to be on the other side because it needs to ultimately be on their side of the property line. By contributing property and by contributing cost to the to that road construction. We'd offered that. We thought we were headed in the same direction. Clearly, you heard some conversation today that we are very surprised by. But we think what we've offered is a very equitable plan. We're happy to continue working toward a solution between now and the preliminary plat. We see no reason to hold it up in the meantime.
Thank you, counsel. Question, councilman Borden.
So what's the value of of? Requested approval if you've got this huge elephant in the room that might. Might alter. A lot more than just the alignment of the road. It changes. Multi family as well. Will you gain by? Taking approval now and still having that unresolved as opposed to. Having them marry up whenever it does.
Mr. Mayor, council member Borden, that's a good question. The just I what I would ask the council to keep in mind is that Cobalt does have to go south of the property line. What we've proposed aligns it so that it's perpendicular to the Kennedy lateral. We think that what we've proposed is equitable. And when it comes to the council's role tonight, you have the ability to approve a concept plan that shows Cobalt. Moving across the property line in the location where we have it. So I think it's within your authority to make that approval. We had hoped to have a solution with the neighbor. We don't think that this should be held up based on on the comments that were made tonight. We will continue to work with our neighbor, but we think it's within your authority to approve it as we've as we've proposed it because again, I. I believe it presents an equitable solution and because we've offered to make these additional these, we've made these offerings on top of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Councilman Borden.
A comment that gives me some pause. I don't disagree with the the rights and options that that are in front of us, but if there's any scenario where. It's that. Super unforeseen, hopeful it never happens where it's not worked out. And Cobalt on the southern property never gets built. What would we do? Application, for example, if you stubbed it there and never contemplated building it. We look at this.
Mr. Mayor, council member Borden, that 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 scenario is what often happens where we stub to a neighbor's property. And then the council looks at a development application when it comes on the neighbor's property and then can. Continues it in accordance with the ten mile interchange specific area plan, which again. Would require Cobalt to continue to the west, south of our property line. So I think that that's covered.
Mr. Mayor.
House one Pro.
I had the same question as councilman Borden that I I don't feel like was really answered, which is that what is it benefit to have the concept plan? Tied to the property, the DA started. If there's potential that the preliminary plat could be delayed, is it so that you can, this permits you to to go and seek. Tenants for these properties or kind of give us some understanding of why not wait for the preliminary plat to be. Presented. Sometimes we see see all three requests for annexation, zoning and. Plating at the same time. Sometimes we don't, but just kind of help us understand from your side. What the benefits and drawbacks are of of holding off. On on proving, you know, tying a concept plan to this property.
Mr. Mayor, council member Pearl, that. A lot of the reason that we came forward with an annexation and rezone was because we wanted to have certain issues resolved, including the access points. We needed to know what we had. Before we could really invest the money on the engineering. Because those access points, for example, were in the air. And so having our concept plan approved, that allows us some certainty to be able to move forward on our preliminary plat. And get the engineering data so that we can then go back to our neighbor and have the conversations that they're they are looking to have. So yes, it would be very helpful to us to have a have a concept plan approval so that we can move forward with that preliminary plat. Knowing that we're we're all rowing in the same place and not being speculative on whether there's going to be an issue on the on the concept plan when everything comes back all at once.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Heath, I'm. I mean, there, there is a point that Joanne makes is the fact that you could have had this all on your property except for the very southwest corner. Because it will have to line up at some point. It could have been drawn to where half of Cobalt, you chop off those two high density, move them forward and just half of is on your property. It is problematic where it lines up across ten mile road. That, you know, you have that parcel. That's kind of the empty lot, you know, so I can understand why you're moving that, but. I guess if you could respond to my my comment that in some ways I feel like we're upon in a negotiation here. That, you know, approve this and now that gives you leverage when I think our preference is rather. You guys resolve this, come up with something both parties can live with and then we can, we can move forward. I I'm, I I really want to do what's right, but at the same time, I don't want to give one party an advantage over another party based on our decision. We like the new plan. I think you got that feedback from council very strongly, but this is an issue that needs to be resolved and then. We can, we can move forward, but so if you want to respond.
Councilmember Holden, I think one thing that I would point out is that. Just having Cobalt Drive swoop down at the very end is not going to be, it's not going to work for a collector layout. It's going to have to be significantly before that, which is why ACHD directed that we stub to the neighbor to the south. And so that's the reason we went with this with this layout. We're certainly not asking for. The council to be a pawn in this game. We've tried to tried to get this sort out. We think that. I think that this applicant has gone above and beyond in making the offerings that they have in this case. Unfortunately, the. Our neighbor to the south wants to have a lot more detail in an agreement than we have right now, and we won't have until the preliminary plat's ready.
Heath, I don't know if this for you, Bill. With without Cobalt Drive being. Built is that is that a requirement? For for this?
Mayor, council, if if I may ask for a little bit of elaboration, you mean as part of stubbing it in or record? Right now, the ten miles interchange specific area plan has a dashed line somewhere in this area. It's. It's not fixed. That line is meant to go float in that area. And as Heath has mentioned, the alignment is preferred to be with Cobalt on the other side of the road because that's where intersects ten mile, which makes it safer for intersections. Or people entering and exiting intersection. So yes, the expectation is that road. For the the comprehensive plan is that that collector street is part of the master street map that we've endorsed from ACHD. So the expectation is. That needs to come in into the site somehow. Whether it's to and through or stub to the property. I can tell you that during our initial conversations with the applicant, they've always showed this road layout. And the only time that it came to our attention was when we started meeting with Joanne and some of her clients because she also has other people that are getting very interested in developing. The rest of this area around this property. And so we had shared with her this concept plan and said, this is what we. We were supporting and this is what they were bringing forward. So at this point, yes, that needs to come in. How it comes in, again, it's this is a concept, but usually the first person that comes in usually sets sets the tone or where the roads. Stubbs and goes and gets pulled into the site. And then as the next property comes in, we we carry on the roadway.
How it comes in and how far it goes is subject to. And where, quite frankly, is subject to this council's viewpoint to a certain extent.
You're absolutely right.
Counsel, further questions, comments? For the. Counsel, Mr. Schrader.
Question maybe for staff. I'm not sure, maybe the applicant, but if we were to approve the concept plan. And then we get to the plat and this isn't worked out. What what can happen then? Can we require that there be an agreement by that point? I mean, how how would we proceed if we did it that way? Seems kind of unusual, but. Help me understand.
Yeah, mayor, members of the council, I'll certainly give you my experience with it and then you can maybe ask the applicant if they're willing to do that, but typically. We're an annexation right now. There is a requirement for a DA. So in the development agreement, you can you as a council member can say, we will not accept. A pre plat until you have those road details worked out. That's one of your options this evening. You can add that as a condition of approval that with their pre plat, they submit that documentation that that's been worked out. I can tell you right now, looking at this concept plan. We would want the plat to match. With the concept plan. I mean, if that road was to shift up a little bit north, I don't think that is a substantial change to the concept plan. I can see that happening. You could still have the parking there. You could still have the open space between the buildings. Yes, the footprint of the building shrink. And they get less units on the particular property, but in the DA, we're not saying do more than. We're not capping them at a certain density on this project. We're capping them at this concept plan. So as long as they still have the. The 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 general layout and the open space and the parking, the way you see it here. I think even if that road does shift up somewhat, it's it's not going to substantially change what you're seeing here. So it really comes down to city council's comfort level, whether or not you want that issue resolved. Now or later. And as you know, as soon as we give zoning away, then that discretionary, your discretion goes gets a little less. Because at a plat, once zoning is in place. And at a plat, all we're really looking at is whether or not it complies with the comp plan and they're they're building those roads to the templates that we have laid out. For you. So that's something that you need to ponder as well, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to Heath if he has any other commentary on it.
No, Mr. Mayor, just to, I I would just say that I think Bill's spot on. That applying a substantial conformance standard, if that road slides and those buildings move up just a little bit, then I I think that that can be addressed. That's a worst case scenario.
So Mr. Mary, members of the council, I guess, on that same vein. One thing I heard. As Butler testified to was she wanted it clear that the council, even in. Granting what level of approval to this annexation that they weren't necessarily tying themselves to this particular drawing. And I guess I don't know from. The applicant or from his Butler's perspective, but I mean, if this were to be a stub street there. That'd be a different conversation. We'd be arguing over that's the right place for the stub. If it was halfway on your property and not and not shown to be on. A a finished road on an adjacent property that there was no agreement to have a road there yet. I I I'd feel more comfortable with the city's approval because we're just approving something on your property. We're not approving something on somebody else's property. And and I'm not as comfortable with saying, well, we all know we aren't really technically approving it. When when we may not all be the same people sitting here when this comes back. And so I guess I don't know if necessarily delay, but. I guess from a development agreement standard, it feels. More enforceable and more protection for the city that this is shown as half on your property. Because normally with ACHD, my experience has been that's what they've required. You know, it's the half plus twelve and we the other half will get built by the other property whenever that happens. And then that's clearly what the intention is here. I get where you're going on. The the crossing and the trade and all of that, but obviously that's not been resolved yet. But then we're not approving something else that appears we're burdening another property when they are not in agreement with it.
Mr. Mayor, for the, just some comments in response to the city attorney. This is a stub to the, the neighboring property and it is showing a, a road in a location on our neighboring, on our neighboring, uh, on a road that is on our, the neighbor's property that is consistent with the 10 mile interchange specific area plan. So there's going to be a road that continues that direction regardless. The road has to be off of our property because of development that's already occurred on the west side of our property. It has to come off. So the stub is not at the western terminus of our property. The stub is on our, our southern boundary into our neighbor's property. And the city always provides for future development on neighboring property because you do comprehensive plans and specific area plans that show where roads are going to be on those, on those properties.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I, uh, I'll, I'll agree with what council member Schrader said earlier in regard to this project. I, I think it's fantastic. I think that you guys have done a great job with it. I think he's listened. For me personally, even though I like this plan and you've done a great job with changing the commercial and the residential portions of it, multifamily portions of it, I personally would feel more comfortable making a decision, having you guys make a decision prior to us mean approving this, this evening. We had a earlier discussion with regard to some, a different application that has nothing to do with tonight, where it got a little clunky and we were going to approve this and with the expectation this would happen and we approved the plat prior to. And it's turned into a pretty big best for us. We're going to get through it and everything's going to be great, but, um, I don't, I just, the risk of it happening again or something similar to it, um, makes me pause for concern.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a second just to confer with my client and come, I have a couple thoughts.
Take a recess.
And, and Mary recess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If the applicant has any further comments.
Mr. Mayor, Heath Clark, and thank you to the council for your graciousness and giving us a couple of minutes to chat. So this is what we would like to propose and I, I think Joanne is willing to come up and confirm. What we'd like to propose is that there be a, a condition of approval that requires that we have an agreement on this issue prior to submittal of the preliminary plat. Lacking in agreement, the road would be moved to be split on the center line on the boundary, which is what you would do under any other circumstance. Does that make sense? Joanne, you want to confirm?
Joanne Butler, for the record, yes, um, we did just talk about that during the recess. Thanks for the time to address that and that we will, uh, work to see if we can get that done prior to plat submittal. And if you would make that a condition of approval, we'd be comfortable.
Thank you. Mr. Mary.
Mr. Members of council, we can also make that a condition of development agreement as well. So it's clear that, again, that condition would be the road would either move to the north or the resolution will be prior to preliminary plat. After the north, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, um, Pearl.
Well, if, uh, if half of that collector then gets placed on the applicant's property, is there going to need to be a change to the concept plan? And if so, does that need to come back before council?
Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pearl, I, I don't believe so because you'd be conditioning it such that it would allow for that type of an alternative. And then I would also point you back to Bill's comments, Parsons, about substantial conformance. You'll recall that he mentioned that if there was some reconfiguration of the road, it's staff's position that that would not be the type of thing that would require a modification to the concept.
Mr. Gordon, did you have?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask, um, legal, if now or, or shortly, if you stated the condition, right? We use the phrase move the, move the road up. Is it really the most specific unit of measure? So if there was to be a condition that we have and maybe the applicant has, like, this is kind of on the fly, the specific language you think would be crystal clear to include in the DA and as a condition of the plat? That would define that type of metric?
So Mr. Members of the council, certainly Mr. Clark could, could weigh in. I, I think what the intent was, was it was not going to be a stub street, but that the conceptual plan that is proposed would be either, um, agreed to by the southern property owner prior to the submittal of preliminary plat, which would then allow it to be wholly on their property. Or in the alternative, if no agreement has been reached prior to preliminary plat, then the road would be divided along the property line or half of Cobalt Drive to be on the northern property and half to be on the southern property at that place where it shows the, uh, this, this, uh, the descent into the stub area right there between the two properties. So I could probably make it more legalese, but I think that's the general concept we're talking about, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I would add to that is just recall that Cobalt ultimately has to get all the way down. So I would just indicate that the, that there would have to be, uh, approval by ACHD of that layout. So it's, it's, it would have to be negotiated or discussed with ACHD before that could be finalized. Again, we've, we've had productive conversations, including in the hall just now, so I don't anticipate that this is going to be a problem, but we do want to make sure that there's, there's explicit condition language.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Under either scenario, Heath, that, that second access on the west, westernmost portion connects to Cobalt.
I'm not sure I understood.
The, the access that was added to Cobalt right there that the arrows on?
Correct.
That will exist under either scenario.
Correct.
Okay. Good, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Maybe just a quick conversation to make sure we're on the same page and.
Maybe just a quick conversation to make sure we're on the same page and questions and comments are made prior to closing the public hearing. Probably would be the most important thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gordon.
Start off with some comments, finishing where we started. I think this is a great improvement. For all of the reasons described from the last hearing to this one, really the only snag that knocked it sideways was Cobalt. Oh, appreciate the quick constructive dialogue amongst the participants that what Mr. Neri described is to be the gist of a condition within a DA that will resolve Cobalt either as depicted on this concept plan or as described by Mr. Neri and agreed to by the applicant seems to be a fair compromise. It's not going to change drastically, really barely at all, this concept plan. These, these properties on the southwest corner might nudge north, they might compress a little, but really it's not going to alter this otherwise well-designed application. So again, appreciate the applicant and then adjoining property owner trying to be constructive. This is certainly a project and application that I can support now that we have that solution.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Mr. Neri.
Mr. Members of the council, based on our earlier discussion, before we approve the findings for this application, we'll bring that back for a conversation to make sure we've got the findings the way you'd like it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Kavanagh.
I like it when Mr. Neri is reading my mind. It's just the amazing trait that you have. That's right. That's right. Apologize for the hot air. Just a couple of comments. Thanks to the applicant. In my two big concerns were about the open space and really the desire to really invest in commercial. I think you hit that both out of the park. So like my colleagues have said, I'm supportive. Candidly, this two-sided approach makes me feel a little uneasy. I like these things a little bit more wrapped up in a box. Don't love taking a little break so things can be worked out in the hallways. But if staff feels confident that we can get this achieved, we've got an opportunity to have it come back. Trust that you guys are going to embark on a path that's mutually beneficial. So I don't have any reason tonight to be opposing to this project. And looking forward to seeing those small details get worked out and something really great from Meridian being built.
Yes, I'll throw my two cents in. I do also appreciate the changes, the modifications that they really incorporated nicely, the multifamily into the project. It makes it feel like a place you could see yourself being and not in a parking lot. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mr. Neri.
I think everybody covered it. Looks great. Appreciate the changes. Love the compromise to get it moving forward so we can see this realized.
Counsel Gordon.
Look that we closed the public hearing on H 2021 0025 for the tenant Meridian.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's name? Guys have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gordon.
The reasons stated by the record and by the council and the applicant, a move that we approve H 2021 0025 as presented in the staff report dated July 13, 2021 to include the permission to allow the Kennedy lateral to remain open as depicted in the concept plan presented at tonight's meeting. That DA provision A.1 D is modified to require the property to be subdivided prior to issuance of the first CO for the development. At the Franklin Road access points are approved as presented. I think that was condition 1C. And that the DA will also include a provision as represented by Mr. Neri and the applicant that has Cobalt Drive as depicted on the concept plan of today's hearing. Or in the alternative that it has one half on, constructed one half on this project, again, is represented by the applicant and Mr. Neri prior to the preliminary plat. And it's in to be included in the DA.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gordon.
Aye.
Kavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Always motion carries and the item is great too. Thank you, everybody. Best of luck. I'm getting the next phase figured out.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gordon.
And thank you again for Councilmember Kavanagh's great suggestion. This is, the, the opportunity came really quick for us. But to have particular attention when these findings come back for us to make sure we've got everything crystal clear on this. So thank you for that.
All right, moving on. Next public hearing is for ACHD Eustick Maintenance Facility H 2021-0029. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. Try to be quick for you here. Application before you is for the ACHD using maintenance facility as noted. The site consists of 23.7 acres of land currently zoned RUT located at 3764 West Eustick, which is approximately the half mile mark between Black Cat and 10 Mile. To the north of the site is the Five Mile Creek. Show it a little better here. And the city's wastewater recovery facility. To the east is the Nine Mile Creek with CN zoning on city property, which would be this property here. Future well and water tank site. I love getting development right next to those. It just is great. To the south is Eustick Road with R4 zoning and detached single family. To the west is RUT, which is county residential and some agriculture still persisting on the site. Mixed use, non-residential is a future land use designation for the site. Purpose of this designation is to designate areas where new residential dwellings will not be permitted as residential uses are not compatible with the planned and or existing uses. For example, the city's wastewater resource recovery facility to the north. A heavy industrial use that should be buffered from residential. Appropriate uses within this designation would include employment centers, professional offices, flex buildings, warehousing, industrial uses, storage, retail and other appropriate non-residential uses. Staff believes that the proposed DA provisions, as well as the screening methods proposed, will be sufficient in mitigating any noxious consequences of the proposed use. So staff finds that the proposed site plan, as well as the use, will be, is generally consistent with the complaint. Your request tonight is for annexation and zoning with a request for aisle zoning for the site. The annexation area is actually 30.27 acres. But the subject site is only 23.7. This is because the applicant is doing the city a favor and cleaning up some of our missed zoning with other applications and including the Nine Mile and Five Mile Creek areas as well, which staff does appreciate. The proposed use for this maintenance facility falls under the public utility major use within our development code. The project is proposed over multiple phases from this year through 2028 and includes a number of different elements to the site, including decant and washout area, broom shed, salt shed, truck wash and scales, and admin building, fleet building, welding shop, as well as covered and uncovered storage areas. The proposed use is permitted, is principally permitted within the aisle zoning district and is subject to specific use standards. Staff's analysis finds that the proposed use is consistent with the specific use standards, as well as the dimensional standards of the requested aisle zoning district, except for one point, which would be the position of the admin building in the southwest corner of the site. I L zoning requires a 35-foot street setback, and they're shown a 25, but they have plenty of time and room to move that. The applicant is proposing solid fencing and the required landscape buffers consistent with code requirements. Solid fencing is proposed on the west and south boundaries with open vision chain link fencing with barbed wire on the north and east boundaries. Despite the probable noise associated with this facility, staff finds the proposed site plan offers adequate landscaping and separation from existing residents by Eustick Road and should mitigate much of the noise from trucks and machinery. Access is proposed via connection of a new collector street that aligns with the Naomi Avenue to the south. The applicant is proposing to construct the road as a three-lane collector with a deceleration lane and five-foot detached sidewalk on the east side of this new street. The street here. When the property to the west redevelops, they will be expected to complete the street by adding the sidewalk and have that detached as well. The submitted plans show this new road to terminate in a temporary turnaround, temporary hammerhead type turnaround, approximately 625 feet into the site. Off of Naomi, the applicant is proposing two driveway accesses, which are both to be gated. Staff supports the proposed access and road improvements. Sewer services are not currently available to the site. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a council waiver to delay connection to city sewer. City water is readily available. It is not entirely clear at what point utilities will be available or needed for the site, but due to the phasing and lack of sewer availability, the applicant did not submit any utility plans at this time. With future development, the applicant will be required to submit these plans and continue coordinating with the city to connect to public utilities, including water needed for irrigation. The applicant is having ongoing discussions with the city engineer on the best path forward for the sewer needs and timeline of this project, which I will touch on soon. At the commission hearing, the commission discussed multiple items, specifically the timeline for the use of the site per the phasing plan here, the construction of the deceleration lane and the overall phasing. They also discussed potential issues associated with having large trucks utilizing the site prior to the D cell lane being constructed as part of the overall widening project, which the applicant will discuss in more detail as well. They discussed the estimated timeline for the Eustick Road widening, which is currently shown or proposes the, in the 2026 to 2030 integrated five-year work plan, but is being discussed to, and there's a desire by ACHD to move that up to prior to 2025. Hopefully 2024. They also discussed how concrete the proposed concept plan is in terms of the building placement and the phasing. And they discussed the capacity of the commission and city to limit the use of the heavy truck traffic for the site via condition of approval or DA, which I did write and include a new DA provision within the, the site. Which is, sorry, down here in J. There's the new DA provision that I created, which the applicant has noted some proposed changes. They did recommend approval of it with this change. The only outstanding issue at the time is this connection to city sewer services. The applicant and public work staff did have additional discussions following the commission hearing and have agreed to a potential option for the interim use of stormwater, or I should say wastewater discharge. Because the Black Cat Trunk Shed to the west is not yet constructed, so this would have to be pumped to the east a little bit, which again, Public Works has not given their approval, but they're willing to work with the applicant. I have proposed a DA provision in line with this to make sure that the city is can hold the applicant accountable. My proposed language is as such, the applicant shall obtain city engineer approval for the interim wastewater discharge proposal prior to construction of the decant and washout areas, as noted on the concept and phasing plan. Additional pretreatment may be required for city engineer review. Prior to the meeting, I did discuss this with the applicant and they are fine with this language and the additional DA provision. As noted, the applicant did respond to the commission recommendation and noted these changes and gave these notes. With item number C, staff understands the concern. I guess that you can, council has their willingness to change that if they want. Staff just wants to ensure that the corridor along in Ontario is well-maintained and looks good as we go along, which is why we said just the whole Eustick frontage to be commercial-based standards rather than industrial. Regardless, there would be no metal allowed to face Eustick, just to be clear, regardless of its industrial or not. And that's not zoning, by the way, just our architectural standards. Required multi-use pathway segment, detached sidewalks along Eustick and Naomi, as well as a micro path and landscape buffers. We usually want those with the first phase. They're proposing the second phase. Really depends on what it is that they're doing with the individual phases, as I noted. I'm not necessarily married to the first phase if the first phase is not going to include the landscape buffers anyways because of the different, the, the D cell line and things like that. So I will let the applicant discuss that a little further with you. F has already been hopefully taken care of. And then lastly, J. That was something that I had to create based upon the discussion of the commission and their proposed changes, I think, make a lot of sense. So I'm perfectly fine with those changes as well. And just for your knowledge, this is more of a written way to talk about what they're proposing in their phasing plan. So following this, I will stand for any questions and take in, take those in.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Kavanagh.
Other question, just a comment, Joe, and I appreciate you touched on it at the end. The proactive approach of applying kind of commercial design standards as opposed to industrial for this particular project, really thoughtful. I know oftentimes when staff present before us, we're asking questions, well, why did you do this? Why did you do this? Help us understand. And I just always like to take those opportunities just to say thanks. Appreciate your kind of proactive approach and kind of educating us on the process.
You're very welcome.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Okay, then what the applicant come for, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario in Meridian Business Address. I'm here representing Ada County Highway District. Different job for me tonight. As Joe indicated, this particular site is within the influence area of the Meridian Wastewater Treatment Facility, which prohibits any residential development. This property had one single family dwelling on it. It was primarily agricultural in nature. The Ada County Highway District purchased this property, as Joe indicated, is 20.75 acres. To the east of the property is city-owned parcel, which they plan on a, a water tank will be located on that site. What's that, Joe? The mouse is wonky. Okay. This kind of gives you an aerial map. As you can see, to the north of the property is Five Mile Creek. Along the northeast boundary is Nine Mile Creek. You can see the wastewater treatment facility. In this general vicinity, there's a mixture of uses. There's many storage facility that I did north of the treatment plant called 10 Mile Storage. McNeilis subdivision, which I did, is to the east over along 10 Mile. You have a flex space in there. You've got retail. You've got a C store. I think they're coming in with some more mini storage. To the south, we do have a residential component. That's Dakota Ridge and Wilkins Ranch, which I also did years ago when I was younger and a little more spry. So this area has a mixture of uses. We've got the Eustick corridor here. When the district approached me to take a look at this property during the due diligence, I did meet with your staff, met, met with Public Works Planning. They indicated they thought this was an appropriate use next to the treatment plant. You can see this is the Eustick Road corridor looking east and the Eustick Road corridor looking west. You can see the corn. They wanted me to come up with a concept plan for this, so I did tour the Cloverdale facility, their Adams facility. It was imperative that the district, based on obviously the extensive growth in the Meridian area, that they have a maintenance facility in northwest Meridian to obviously That they have a maintenance facility in Northwest Meridian to obviously provide better, faster service as far as. The road networks are concerned, snow removal, sanding, de-icing, et cetera. So I kind of got a crash course in maintenance facilities and worked closely with their staff who were very talented and very helpful. To come up with this concept plan that's before you. We pre-apped with your staff on a couple of different occasions. They indicated, you know, the council is going to want to kind of see some type of a concept. Obviously, this is. This is a rough concept, they will retain an architect to obviously refine this. But it does include all the elements in which the district proposes on this site. So this evening, we're asking for annexation or rezone to light industrial, which is consistent with your comprehensive plan. Which complies with the overlay of the, of the treatment facility. The property is encumbered by a floodway, a flood plain. We did take that into consideration in our, in our site plan. We have been working with your public works department as far as the flood coordinator and what their recommendations are. There was an existing house on the corner initially when I submitted application. The, the house on the southeast corner was going to be used as a temporary administrative building. After further meetings with their commission, they determined that they would remove the home. And would not utilize that as an a temporary administrative office. Laying this out, we did provide for twenty-five foot of landscaping along the Eustick Road corridor. We have a three hundred foot D cell lane. We've allocated obviously the ultimate right of way to accommodate the rebuild of the Eustick corridor, which is in the capital improvement plan for 2025. We also matched up with Naomi Avenue to the south. So A C H D will be building Naomi to the north, that north leg. And then when the property to the west develops, then they will come off that leg and Naomi Drive will then go westward. Obviously to provide interconnectivity throughout that area. Right now, there's currently a twelve inch water main in Eustick. There is also a sewer main and manhole in Eustick. This particular piece of property within your master sewer plan is right there at the edge of that ten mile sewer shed. And the north black cat sewer shed. So what we've been working with public works over the past probably eight weeks. Providing them flow rates, providing them information on the sweeper trucks, the back trucks. What they'll be discharging, what the needs of the district are going to be at this facility. Obviously, in their budget, it's going to be an incremental process or a phased process in developing this site. And of course, the best laid plans, you know, obviously what happens, you get a monkey wrench or you get a new commission. That may change that phasing, but, but obviously we, we've done the best to provide information to the city on how we anticipate this to develop. Right now, that north black cat trunk is approximately twenty-six hundred and fifty feet to the northwest. So what we talked to public works about is some type of an interim like grinder pump. Which we would like first, for example, the administrative office, the shop. Or some of the other facilities do an interim pump pressure line going into the existing manhole in Eustick. And then at such time as that trunk is available, then the district would obviously extend it and then discontinue that interim discharge to the ten mile trunk. It's kind of, it's kind of funny, properties that are right next to the treatment plants are the most difficult to serve. I had one at Nampa that was south of the Nampa treatment plant and the sewer was too shallow to serve it. It was, and so it's, it's, it's kind of a funny situation. I've encountered this before. But what you see here is with Naomi, we'll have a twenty foot landscape buffer. We met with your pathways department. The pathway coordinator indicated that the city is planning for a multi-use pathway. We built it in McNeilis subdivision along the nine mile and the five mile creek. The city has retained T O engineers and they're designing a bridge and designing the pathway. That you see running along the north side of. The new battery. Anyway, running along the north boundary, there it is. Right here. So the district has agreed that they will participate in construction of the ten foot multi-use pathway. We will put a non-site obscuring fence. One of the things that we talked about was something that would obviously meet the needs of the district as far as security for their equipment and their facility. But yet be aesthetically pleasing, so we would do like a chain link coated, color coded fence. Along both the north and then along the east boundary. Along the south boundary, we would do like a Trex fence, an industrial height of about eight feet. And then along the west boundary, we would do the same. And one of the things that we did incorporate, the staff did not ask us to do. We have detached sidewalk that runs along Naomi and then along the landscape buffer that we have going to the north up to Five Mile Creek. I also included a five foot pathway so people could come across you stick at Naomi. Because eventually that's going to be a signalized intersection. Here is kind of a overall phasing plan. What we did is, is we took information from the district and then we created a color coded, which kind of shows the phasing. Basically, phase one for 2021. Is removal of the existing home and getting, you know, design plans. For some of the infrastructure and improvements with on the, in the site. Phase two is in 2022. And that includes. Well, there's phase one, you can see that the home is removed. Then phase two shows that we'll be building a D cell lane. They'll be building Naomi, kind of an internal circulation. Getting the landscaping established along the Eustick corridor and then getting the fencing of the site is here. Phase two include, or face, face three, excuse me, includes the decant center, you can see that in yellow. And then twenty twenty-four is kind of the big year where they'll install. Their, their covered storage facilities, their sand and salt shed, their fuel tank islands, their wash bays. And then phase five is 2025. So one of the things that the district was very concerned about is not being held specifically to the phases. Because it, their budget is going to dictate what they can afford to build each year. One of the items that came up that shows you kind of the, the Trex, deep foot Trex industrial fence. And there's the color coded dent. One of the things that came up at the Plains zoning commission was, when are you going to rebuild the Eustick corridor? Right now, it's two lanes, you're going to be adding additional traffic, additional truck traffic, et cetera. It's important that this area has been building out at an increasing level. And so the district in their capital improvement plan has the Eustick corridor programmed for 2025. Along with that corridor, then they would obviously install Naomi and install the signal. All access, as Joe indicated, is taken off of Naomi. This site will not have any direct access to the Eustick corridor. We will have gated entry into, into the facility. As you can see, we have a significant amount of landscaping and pathways that will serve this. In the conditions of approval, I did submit to the council, I apologize for the lateness of, of my letter. But I needed to run it past the district and, and there's lots of cooks in the kitchen here. And by the time I got everybody's, everybody's input, it was kind of like. One of the things is in our conditions of approval, eight, A one, it indicates that they would pay the three hundred and three dollars for the development agreement. They have a interagency governmental agreement with the city of Meridian to waive any costs or fees. So that really wouldn't be applicable. Item C deals with the. Design review guidelines. We designed the site so that, and, and that was due to your staff's input in the pre-application conference. To kind of. Put the administrative building right at the corner of, of the site, kind of as the anchor to the site. We would have access into the administration building, it would not be gated. The gate, as you can see, is further to the east. And then we would have the, the shop and then the weld shop attached to that. They did review the guidelines, I reviewed the guidelines as far as application of them to that facility. We think that that makes sense. The only concern I had was the covered storage, we kind of have an L shaped covered storage. Majority of that covered storage is oriented to the east, which will be the water tank, but we do have a leg that will be oriented to along the Eustick corridor. Now staff has placed a condition on us that we will berm fence and provide additional landscaping beyond what is normally provided along the arterial. So we, we just want to make sure that this is not. An excessive cost to the district. For that storage building. But they have looked at using different varieties, textures of masonry, so that it does have some architectural features. To keep a good aesthetic look along that corridor. We're in agreement with the public works condition and I guess Jay is my last condition. The planning zoning commission worded that such that the district was extremely concerned. That they would be caught between a rock and a hard spot. So therefore, we did provide the council with some alternative language that. That the interim uses that may need a building permit and do not require an occupancy, that the applicant would. Be able to. Put in like the decant center prior to the improvement along Eustick. Because they, they kind of stuck us with, you will improve Eustick by phase X. And that's just not viable for the district. And so what we provide is no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until phase four of the project, consistent with the submitted and revised phasing plan. And the D cell lane along Eustick frontage is constructed. So we just need that much, you know, that flexibility. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Okay, how, how tall is that berm along Eustick Road? I think you said an eight foot Trex, Trex fence would be on top of that.
Yeah, um, we have twenty-five feet of landscaping. So the berm would probably be three feet and then you'd have maximum height. Bill indicated in the industrial zone is eight feet and we'll use that Trex fence. So as far as viewing the, the backside of that covered storage area. You're not going to see a lot of it.
Understand. In that slot, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm hoping.
And Becky, so that's going to be a single, single story type of storage building, not extra tall or a normal. Park a normal height of twelve, fifteen feet.
Single story.
Okay. And I, I just want to comment, appreciate you putting in that pathway that would connect Naomi to, to the. The parkway, which the, the.
Multi-use path.
Multi-use pathway, thank you. And, and also appreciate you putting it on your property, not the other property, but so be it.
And I had one other question. You had an area, it was hard to read. Years ago, we didn't need these things and even then it's kind of. It, it looked like a regen area, but it also looked like an emergency access or some access point to the east, to the city property. And I didn't know if there was another access point for fire trucks or what, what that was about.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, that's called a regen area. And I'll leave. It's not an access, it's an area that they use, explained it to me and it, it was Greek to me.
For the record, Lloyd Carnegie, maintenance manager at A C H D, three seven seven five Adams Street, Garden City. The region area is for our pieces of equipment that require regeneration for the exhaust system. We want to designate it a safe spot for them to do that regen.
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilman Cavanagh.
Becky, just maybe dovetailing on one of the council member Hoagland's question, that again, the large. L shaped covered storage, I recognize it's one story, but what's the anticipated height of that building?
Haven't designed it, I think, I mean, it's, it's. The ones I saw at, at Cloverdale and over at Adams. Were less than thirty-five feet. Significantly less than thirty-five feet. Even to handle their, you know, part, it's to park their trucks in.
Sure.
So.
Um, Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Becky, help me understand which of these structures that are. That are on your concept plan are solid structures versus, and I know you refer to it as a shed, but if, if it's what I'm thinking of, that you have at the Adams facility, they're really like. Big kind of canopy tents, really, right? Not really, I guess, I want to think of a shed, I think of a shed in my backyard that's got a structure and a roof. And I just want to make sure that I'm not applying what I think in my backyard to what you're planning to build out there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, yeah, the, the salt shed over at Adams Street is kind of like the I T D salt sheds that you see along highway fifty-five. Going north up to McCall. Because the, I think it's EPA D E Q requirements that they have the salt covered, salt and sand covered. And then like they have their decant center, that's an area where.
Can you, sorry, Becky, I mean, just, Mr. Mayor, Becky, I mean, can you kind of point? Trying to get a sense.
Let me try to get this. Is that you, Joe, or me? That's you, the decant, the decant area. So that's the decant area and so that's where their sweepers come in, they discharge the material.
Sorry, Becky, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense, because I don't, I don't know from the.
It's a concrete structure. It's kind of a concrete, it's a concrete bay structure. Yes, I thought I talked loud enough. Wow, and I've always thought I was a loud talker. That, that decant area, the one I toured out at, out at the Cloverdale site was a, a system of concrete bays where they had a washout. For their sweeper trucks pull up there, they wash them out.
So, Mr. Mayor, Becky, a decant bay is a solid structure without a roof.
Correct.
Whereas the salt tents are a roofed base structure with. Whereas the salt tents are a roof-based structure with no walls.
Correct. And then you have, you have what they call, just in front of the salt and, and sand shed, you have what they call their racks. And so that's where their, their sanding trucks. They have, they have a, a little thing where they pick them up and put them on the truck and that holds the sand. It's like a bed. That's what I'm thinking of, little bed area. Then they kind of had open, open storage. Then they have, you can see the fuel islands, and then they have what they call their mag tanks. So those are all open areas. Is that what's going on? We'll try it. Oh, yeah. Oh, that's nice. Yeah. So here's the racks. You can see that there, there are fuel islands. This is the mag tanks, so the magnesium chloride that they have.
Those are solid structures?
I know, those, it's a kind of a concrete pad and then those tanks set on that concrete pad. And then the trucks come in and they, they, they refuel them. And then this is a concrete pad also. And then that's like the truck wash. So that's a structure. And then this particular building, can't read that, I gotta. Yeah, the broom shed, so that's for the sweeper trucks.
And that's a solid structure or?
The broom shed is a solid structure that you see right there. And there's the drainage truck shed. And then we have like truck scales also included in the site. And one of the things that, that Heather was was insistent on that, that we have a lot of pull-through. So to minimize those backup beepers. So, well, I have to give her credit. That was her idea. And to make sure that, that everything was continuous and we didn't have a lot of backing motion. Operational hours are probably going to be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then they will have night operations, obviously, if we have a significant snow event or any type of emergency. Heather, do you have any comments?
Questions? For the Eustick maintenance site. Want everything to be a continuous flow and so that wouldn't be hindrance with noise or. Trying to be very.
Mr. Mayor.
That's all, Ms. Schrader.
Thank you. I have several concerns and I'll get into those in a bit, but I did have a question while we have you here. What is the quality or environmental impact of what you're discharging at this facility? Yeah, what are you, what are, what's coming off the trucks and where is it going and, and is that okay? And, and who says so?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Schrader. It's a, we have a settling ticket. It's, it's a decanting station that we emit the water in and it separates the solids from the liquids. It goes through a phase approach with a four bay. It has settling tanks that it goes through. And it gets filtered out through a sand filter before it gets emitted into the drainage system or the storm drain system, water line. And we have one at our Adams facility and our Cloverdale facility. It's tested to make sure that there's no impurities or whatnot. So very conscious of that. We have the DEQ. We have our environmental department that helps us with that. So we look at that. So we're very conscious of that to make sure that it's, that it's bad pollutants.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Schrader, just to touch on that more, they're, they're going to be required to do some environmental permits that the city does not do, but at the federal level with. So all of that will be permitted outside of our purview as these come online. In addition to floodplain permits as well, because the north half of the site is in the floodplain, which is why they moved the decant and washout area from the northwest corner. So they're, they're well aware of the environmental impacts that this could and may have. But they will be handled outside of what our review is here in the state of Idaho.
Mayor. Mayor.
Yes, Warren.
Yeah, one of the other things, this is Warren and Public Works Department. And one of the other things that we've talked to Becky about is that at some point, we'll want to get our hands on that information with regards to the concentrations and so forth that they're going to be discharging so we can analyze whether there needs to be a pre-treatment permit. We have talked about that. That's one of the conditions that was added that, you know, we'll want to make sure that we have a good idea of what's coming out of there and if there needs to be a pre-treatment permit with the city. But we haven't got that yet, but I think we can work that out and certainly we can develop a pre-treatment permit if that's what's required.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I will just outline my concerns right now and we'll hear more, you know, testimony and everything, but I just, I just want to get those out there. So Becky, so you and your team can address them, but they may be challenged. You know, to me, the basics of development has always been that we don't develop until the sewer is ready. I view this as a pretty big departure from that normal practice. I am concerned with having a DA provision to enforce things. We just had a big meeting about how DA provisions and specifically issuing a certificate of occupancy is not an adequate enforcement mechanism to ensure that things happen. So I have some pretty significant concerns about the sewer being ready. And then in addition, you know, hopefully waiting for Eustick to be widened until 2024. You know, if this is a different applicant, I don't know how I would view that, but clearly we're not ready for big trucks. And this is within the applicant's control. And I want to see Eustick fully widened all the way to Oihe High School. And so I'd want to see, I think, to be supportive, like a, a plan for ACHD to do that faster or for that to happen before I approve this. Or for you to work with the city somehow to get that accelerated. But right now, to me, we know, waiting until 2025 for this, I, I just don't think it makes sense considering the state of that road.
Counsel, any additional questions or information for the applicant to consider before we get into public testimony, if there is any?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Additional, Becky, is this facility coming online because of the growth in the county and the need to expand? Is this relocating another facility? What's, what's the basis of this particular project?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, the district has basically outgrown both of their sites. The needs of, of the growth that, that, that we've seen in the valley. This is, it's the needs for this to be a satellite site. And the third mate, full maintenance site is part of essential services. And obviously, the council and the mayor have, have always been supportive of, you know, we need to provide essential services to take care of the growth that's taking place. Obviously, hampering the development of this site is hampering essential services. Concerning the sewer, we've been working with Public Works closely. This is right there on the, the borderline of two sewer sheds. We've dealt with this issue on multiple occasions. We've had situations where we've had an interim service. Obviously, we'll, we'll work with your public works department, your city engineer. We provided a significant amount of information data. And since this will be coming on incrementally, it's not like we're going to be overloading or surcharging that 10-mile trunk by, by this plan. As far as the improvements, the district has assured me they're going to do everything they can to accelerate due to the fact that Oihe High School is coming online to accelerate that Eustick corridor widening. If at all possible, they will try to move it up. However, they qualified that, that they've got a purchase right-of-way. They have to design the arterial. And there's just a lot of steps and even the best laid plans sometimes get delayed if you get a hiccup. They, they are going on the record that they will not have any trucks going into this facility unless they have installed this D cell lane to accommodate getting those trucks outside. And this being over a, you know, seven or eight-year period, you're going to see this site develop incrementally. It's not like it's coming online instantly and there's no improvements on Eustick Road. That is not the case. That is not what the district is, is asking the city to do. All they're doing is taking this first step to get this property annexed and then start working on acquiring right-of-way, design plans, working with Public Works, getting an architect in online. This is just the first step in a multi-step process. And that we ask that the council and the mayor support it because obviously your priority area in Northwest Meridian is going to put even more of a significant burden on the district and its resources. And so they need to get out into this area.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Appreciate, I'm sure Councilmember Schrader appreciates you also kind of addressing some of her questions there. I just, I want to make sure that I heard you right. This is a third location, not a combination of your two existing facilities.
No, it's a third location. New management. It's going to have new staff. And that's one of the other things that they qualified with me is as they bring on each phase, they're going to be hiring new employees for those staff. New mechanics.
Mr. Mayor, can Becky speak into the microphone, please?
Can you repeat that, Mick? Becky?
As each phase comes on and, and they start building the, this incrementally, the district will be hiring new employees to work at this site. It's not like they're transferring employees from other sites to here. This will be a whole new independent third maintenance facility in Ada County. And adding equipment, that's the other thing. They have to budget equipment. Significant amount of equipment, employees, and obviously infrastructure and buildings.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, Councilman Schrader raised an interesting, you know, point that I think is of concern is the road widening and the D cell lane is, is great to have, but I'm, I'm curious as to when the center turn lane, when trucks are coming from the west to make that left turn. As you know, I live one mile exactly to the east. And when that light change, I know on Linder, you're going to wait a while and I've got a car, I'm turning left. And, you know, I can sit there in the center lane, but this is going to back up traffic immensely, depending on time of day. So I, I want to make sure I understand the phasing plan. Phase one, cleaning out the house, having the property. Phase two, looks like you're doing the paving, getting things ready. Phase three, sounds, it looks like to me, and I could be wrong, the decant area and is that a washout? So there'll be some trucks coming in there, the, the sweeper trucks and whatnot. So we will have trucks starting. Can you give me some idea how many trucks that would be? And I know emergency situations are kind of the other, but for, for those other facility, for normal operation.
Probably going to be no more than 10, if that. You know, it's just as we add and progress. So it's just going to be a site out there for existing ones that can come out if they're in the area, they can use that. But they'll be primarily still using the other sites that they're located at. We get that completed.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, follow up?
That's right.
And then just to keep moving forward, then in, in phase four, 2024, and again, understand budgets and whether they slide this way or that way. You're going to be constructing the covered storage and the bulk of, of the facility with, with that, in that phase. And to me, that means definitely there's going to be a lot more truck traffic. It's going to be almost fully operational, quite a, quite a few trucks. But the, if I understood correctly, the road widening is scheduled for 2025?
Yes, CIP, but if, depending on when we budgets allow, we'll move that up.
Correct. And so anything that we would condition with the phase, it would just stick with that phase, whether it gets moved up or moved back. Is that how, I mean, that in my way of thinking, that's how we would do it, but not tied to a year, but to a phase. So if you move up a phase and we ask for something to be done in that phase, that would happen when that happens. So doesn't, doesn't matter on the year because it may get delayed and, and that requirement then would also be delayed to, to that phase, tying it to the phase.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Paul Dale, Chief of Staff over at the Ada County Highway District. One of the things that, that I cannot promise, because the, the phases are, are a part of the budget process. You know, if we condition things to a phase, I cannot speak for the commission. The commissioner are the ones that are going to be ultimately responsible for saying, proceed with this project. So I, I, I can't sit here and promise you that, yes, you condition the Eustick widening to phase three is going to happen. We, we cannot say that. I cannot speak for the commission along those lines.
Right. Mr. Mayor. And to that point, so if we say, hey, in, in 2024, if this is going to happen, you're going to have this many trucks. However, we, we, we discuss it, we want to have a center turn lane and that gets delayed. So that center turn lane would be laid, but also that phase, because the phase was delayed. But if you move the phase up, then that's going to be part of the requirement for that phase depending on the budget. And, and we remind the mayor that all the time, that, you know, he can't.
And you folks have the perfect opportunity when we have joint meetings to, to remind the commissions of some of your wants and wishes as well.
Well, question for you. But one second. From a very practical standpoint, how do you operate this facility with no employee, employee parking? Which is in the final phase. I mean, that's, that, that's what, one of the things I look at is like, well, is it only going to be interim traffic in 2028 final phase or final phase is when you actually become an operational site?
Yeah, we're going to set aside an area for temporary parking for the employees on the site when we do the, you know, there's going to be an area where they're going to do that in the interim.
Okay.
Put that on the plan because I was just making the whole.
Okay, so that would be when paved parking in theory is on there, but not necessarily. Okay, well, that helps please. Okay.
The whole site will be paved.
The whole site will be paved.
Councilman Perrow.
Yeah, I'm tracking with my fellow council members' questions and thoughts on this. I, I would also like to see kind of an overlay of a timeline of road development. And in the amount of truck traffic that will be coming through. Obviously, right now, they can drive on Eustick Road. There's no limitation. You know, we see construction trucks all over the place. But I, just not having the knowledge of, of how much that changes the, the size and level of intense use of this area would be really helpful to know. The, the, one thing I wanted to point out along what Councilman Hoagland, where he was headed is that, let's say that, that, that this is correct and 2024 is primarily when majority of the, of the structures are built and developed. Yeah, it's, it's in the five-year plan for ACHD to build that section of road, to widen that section of road. But that's just the design phase, is my understanding, that starts in 2025. So we could be out in 2027 really until that actually is constructed. So now we don't have a year, we have three years. So I guess I just, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing some sort of timeline that pieces this together for us of what to expect in relationship to the phases and relationship to, on the construction of Eustick. And I realize again that it is a budget thing, but over the years that I've been watching this happen, I feel like ACHD has gotten a lot better at actually sticking to the, the fiscal year and the five-year plans that have been created. Seeing fewer modifications of those than I used to, maybe I'm imagining things. But I, I think it's good for us to at least have, have some idea of, you know, we, just, just as you do, we, and you've, if, if you've been listening to our entire meeting tonight, there's a lot of conversation about being open with the public and, you know, putting out there what it is that we expect to have happen. And so we feel that obligation to do that for our residents. So and I, I just wanted to say, I, I agree. I'd like, I'd like to see some more information to the best of your ability as to what to expect for a timeline over the next eight years and, and the phases involved.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta. One of the things that.
Okay, if you can get a little closer to the mic.
One of the staff members brought up is that that section of Eustick right in front of the site is already three lanes at this juncture. One of the staff members brought up is that that section of Eustick right in front of the site is already three lanes at this juncture. Um, as far as the Eustick Road rebuild um, and signalization and all that, um, that 2025 date is a construct date, not a design date. So, so it would not be started in 2025, it would be accomplished in 2025. Correct? Construction started in 2025. Design in 23.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Um, to build on this more, I would want to reiterate that one of the day provisions that were added by the commission does address this at least in some way to say that none of the buildings that will require any kind of CO cannot occur until the deceleration lane is constructed, which should help with some of these truck issues. Again, it's tied to the phase, which is shown as phase four, which includes the probably what would it bring the most amount of trucks, as you guys noted with the salt shed and the covered storage and all those things. So commission and staff have worked through some of this issue for you guys. So I did want to just reiterate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
So Joe, just maybe to get some additional feedback. Um, we had a meeting earlier today where I, I thought it was pretty clear that at some point we're obligated to issue a CO and a TCO when all, there is not a life safety issue in any of the buildings. And so I, I appreciate that we may have some leverage point here, but I don't know how, what the peak hours are of the number of trucks coming into another facility. But what's to stop us from, I mean, what do we do if 40 trucks come through here and a building's not constructed? What leverage do we truly have to, to enforce this to ensure that it happens?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's for you.
Mr. Mayor is afraid he was going to say that. Um, so yes, as we spoke of earlier, tying the COs to that are, can be a, a staff challenge to address. But I don't have a, a, a good answer to the fact that if there's no buildings there, but the truck traffic is coming there for whatever purpose to just dump their loads off and leave the site, not, not work on that site. I don't have a mechanism to enforce that. I don't have a code enforcement option that could sit there and uh, count trucks and I, I have neighbors complaints and I have letters to them and at the best, if necessary, we would go to court and then try to enforce that through our, through our development agreement. But otherwise it is, it is a significant challenge to use a DA for that type of enforcement.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one burn.
You know, um, first off, grateful for our strong partnership with ACHD and for um, all they do for us. I really appreciate, wanted to say that on the record. With that said, I, I uh, I'm looking through my notes here from this past weekend and again, yesterday, just going over some last bit of items and I, and, and Councilwoman Strater has hit on almost every single one of my concerns that I have written down. So just wanted to state for the record that I share the same concerns as well.
Mr. Mayor, uh, if I may address a, a couple of the questions that came up. Uh, currently even at our Adams and Cloverdale facility, we don't have 40 or 50 trucks coming and going. The trucks leave in the morning, go out into the field and they typically operate out in the field. The, the, some of the drainage trucks and, and some of the sweepers do make it back uh, to, uh, to dump their loads and, and take on water and go back. Now, uh, at each of the facilities, you're probably looking at, uh, I think we have about 12 to 15 of the, of heavy dump trucks. Uh, and they're not coming and going. It's the 12 or 15 uh, sweepers that uh, come and go, some of the drainage trucks coming and going. There's not going to be a whole lot of traffic, especially before we get all the buildings built. You know, some of the uh, sweepers are going to be out in this area, will use the decant station. You know, you're probably looking at um, a max of six or eight a day. Now, as we start to get uh, some of the facilities built and we start getting people stationed out there, you're still not going to get truck traffic, i- as you're talking about a neighborhood of 40 trucks a day. As I said, the trucks will be out in the morning, they come back at night. And there'll be a, a few times when they're coming and going. Winter ops, you, you may get a little bit more because you have to come back for salt and sand loads. Uh, but nowhere near the, the 40 trucks a day coming and going from the facilities.
Counsel, additional questions? The applicant? At this time?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. Mr. Court, do we have anyone sign up to write testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Hey, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to provide testimony on this item? Or anybody online, which I doubt that to be the case, seeing who's online.
Mr. Mayor, this is Steve. Hi.
This is your sit away. Are you public testifying as Steve Sitaway from your home or um, are you staff looking to make comment?
Staff.
Okay. Let me just make sure. Yep, I think we're good. Go ahead, Mr. Sitaway.
Okay. Um, first of all, I like uh, one statement and two question clarification questions regarding the pathway. Uh, and I'd also like to start off expressing some gratitude for the many partnerships we have with ACHD, but my uh, my uh, so my, my statement about the, this pathway is that it, this is a a key segment for us and one that I'm very interested in, frankly, excited to see the possibility of it moving forward. Um, it is a, it does fill a key gap between the existing pathway on the McNeelis subdivision on the west and the Quartet subdivision extension of this pathway to the east. My two questions for clarification, one is related to the bridge over the Nine Mile Creek to the uh, west. Uh, sorry, to the east, um, east of the subdivision. And uh, I, in preparation for tonight's hearing, I did go through the, the uh, staff report and I noted in a couple of locations. Uh, item J under pathways and I under M underwaterways. A reference to the bridge, it says the applicant has proposed to build the required multi-use pathway as well as to construct the pedestrian bridge over the Nine Mile Creek to the east. Staff appreciates the added cooperation with the Parks Department on extending pedestrian facilities. I haven't heard any reference to that bridge over the Nine Mile Creek, so I just wanted to clarify if that is intended to be constructed along with the rest of the pathway or not. Uh, my second question is just regarding the phasing plan. I noticed, I noted in the the proposed changes uh, in the conditions that it moved from phase one to phase two. Um, I don't have any particular heartburn over that, but I also noted the desire not to be held to any particular phasing plan. Um, I, so I don't know how to, how to do this. I am sensitive to the fact that any phases are subject to the commission's approval of budgets. Um, but if it could at least be tied verbally to that, you know, first phase of paving on the site. Um, which is currently shown as FY, uh, as, as 2022, I think that works. Um, and so I just wanted to uh, try and get some clarification related to the, the phasing. And then also the clarification on anything to do with that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Mayor.
Joe, are you going to try to answer those questions?
I can answer the, yes, I will try. And then Becky can back me up. Um, I will admit a mistake of discussing the pedestrian bridge within the staff report. I was mistaken while writing. Um, that they are not proposing to construct the bridge. They proposed to construct their segment. And then the Parks Department was going to construct the bridge per the conversations that I have, I was not privy to, but have heard about between the pathways coordinator and the applicant. That was a mistake by me to discuss that so directly in the staff report, which is also thankfully I didn't put a specific condition in there, but that was my fault. And then also with the, with the phasing, I, I think what they requested changes to saying that the pathway gets constructed with phase two, which would be the paving. Uh, makes sense. I, I believe uh, Steve, that that's what they're trying to do. If we want to change the language a little bit to include with the first phase of pavement, that makes sense as well to include that additional language.
Okay.
So wait, did you get your questions answered sufficiently to your knowledge?
Uh, yeah, it does. Um, I was obviously hoping for that, that to, to see that the bridge was part of it, but I do. It looks like it might be actually an off-site improvement now that I'm looking at this version of the phasing plan. Looking at the previous one, uh, it, it looked like it might be uh, at least partially on their site. Maybe it made sense for some shared costs, but if it's an off-site improvement, it maybe does belong to us and I just don't have those details right in front of me. So that's why I wanted to clarify it while we're on the record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, to confirm it is off-site, it is within the irrigation district's land completely, the bridge would be.
Thank you. Thank you. You're coming forward for that final.
Becky McKay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the bridge is off-site. It, it is on Nampa Meridian Irrigation District property, not, no portion of it lies with, in this site. And we were told that TO engineers have been retained by your Parks Department to design and that that would be part of the city's um, portion of improvements out there. But yet they expected the district to construct uh, the multi-use pathway along all of their frontage of Five Mile Creek. And make connection and they wanted to make sure that that bridge that we hooked up to where it was coming across. So they sent us their CAD drawing. And then phase two would, that's what we're asking for is since phase one doesn't include really any improvements other than removing the home. Phase two would include the multi-use pathway so that we can get that online and, and get that pathway moving westward.
Becky, was that your closing remarks? Okay. Well, it's your, it's applicant's closing remarks as well. The clerk already said your timer, but.
Um, in, in the closing remarks, uh, one of the things that was brought to my attention is um, at, at full build out uh, of this facility, uh, ACHD determined based on the ITE that there would be 28 vehicle trips uh, during the PM peak hour. And as far as the level of service right now of Eustick, it's better than E. And I guess my closing, my closing comments are, you know, we want this to be a partnership with the district and the city to make this happen. I mean, we come before you guys and we talk about fire stations and police stations and sewer capacity and, and water capacity. ACHD is a part of that infrastructure that we all benefit from and we use. And it's their desire to work as a partner with the city to make this site happen to better serve their constituents, which are also the city constituents. So we would ask for support of this annexation, uh, so they can move into their, their design. Uh, working with your staff uh, to, to obviously make this happen. Um, I think this, there's no better location than this one as far as I'm concerned. Um, it's, it's perfect uh, for North Meridian, being by the plant, by the water tank, along the Eustick corridor. It's obviously targeted for significant upgrade.
Counsel, any final comments that, I think you should stick around.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I, I was just going to say that uh, as, as we discuss this, I, I think I'd like to leave the public hearing open during our, our discussion, just because to, to me, this is more about a, a timing and what goes where, when, and how that all works together. And I think we might have more questions. Have some dialogue on that. There's, there's a lot of good things about having this in that location and, and North Meridian and needing a facility. It's just a matter of how do these things uh, work, work together with the roads and other, other phases. So if, if council's okay with that, to have those discussions, be probably eas- a lot easier.
Yeah.
Understood.
And I'll piggyback, you know, I know you're here representing the applicant, but when we talk about fire stations and police stations and what we, what we often talk more about is lack of roads, not lack of sweet strippers. You know, and it's road infrastructure. I, I, if I'm reading what I'm hearing tonight, it's the road. That's going to be a big question mark about um, to Councilman Holdens, he's talked about timing.
Mr. Mayor, I fully understand.
Yeah, that's the infrastructure needed.
And the district has assured me that upgrading that Eustick corridor is uh, is a top priority to them. Uh, they realize the, the significant need for it. Uh, when we had our neighborhood meeting, we only had three residents that attended. Um, none of them ejected to the site. And the only item that came up was, when are you going to rebuild Eustick? So, so yes, I mean, it's, I think it's on the minds of everyone. Um, obviously that's within their purview. Um, but they need the time to, like I said, purchase right away, design the facility, build the facility. And I think what they're saying to you is the latest we would start construction would be 2025. If at all possible, we will accelerate that and hopefully start in 2024. Um, this site is going to take a quite a bit of time for them to retain an architect, retain engineers. Um, and get their EPA, their DEQ approvals, work with your public works. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to take time. It's a complicated kind of process. I was surprised when I toured both their facilities. I guess I didn't realize what hap- all the things that happened behind the scenes, but, but we need those things uh, as a community. Uh, Meridian needs them and the district is here to provide them and we just need to find a mechanism and a way that, that we can do that.
And, and what I will say from a practical standpoint, I, I think we all can agree that this is not going to look like the Cloverell facility. I mean, driven by that for years and it's I appreciate the effort that has been done here to try to keep from view what that looks like because it's, you know, i- it is an eyesore for parts of our community. I'm not going to say our wastewater treatment plant is a a beautiful thing to look at in an open, you know, we don't have high walls guarding the you know, view of that. It's tucked back. And so the elements of this that are tucked back, you know, I, I can get that. The stuff that's up closer though, I think that even if you look at our, since Mr. Sitaway was on here, our parks making this facility that we have. You know, that's visible from the road. It's back. It's a pretty nice facility at the same time. And so I think the, the quality of what's built, whether it's screened or not, I think that's an important component, especially as you rise above you know, the, the visible heights because sorry, when I drive by Cloverell, what you, what you see, that's not what I, I think our residents want to see for a, a, a price point that is conscious of taxpayer dollars at the same time, but.
And Mr. Mayor, I think, I think you, you hit the nail on the head. W- one of the things with the Cloverell site is that's an old site. Um, and they purchased additional property and then obviously tried to, you know, install landscaping, but it's kind of been a retrofit. Uh, the Adams site is kind of the same way. This particular site, they have the benefit of designing it from the ground up. Um, and they are obviously committed to making sure that this is not an eyesore. That it complements that Eustick corridor. And they're willing to spend some additional monies to make sure that aesthetically it's pleasing. And that's why we, you know, we obviously oriented some of these buildings up there next to Eustick and next to Naomi. You know, and it's not just a sea of parking like you see at Cloverell and Emerald. You know, and they're willing to add additional landscaping up the Annie on fencing. Their, their commitment is here.
It's, it's.
I'm been pleased with, with how much they've, they've worked with us and the staff.
I, I think that's clear and I think it's just making sure that we don't lose sight of that as this moves forward.
Understood. And I, I think that they'll take that message back to the commission and back to their superior.
Mr. Mayor.
Show.
I just want to touch on two finite points real quick, just to make sure that they're clear. Uh, one was regarding the landscaping. I have, I'm not requiring a berm, just to make that clear, no berm. Just denser landscaping with landscape beds to help mitigate the noise associated with that. Trees, as we all know, you go anywhere near the coast. Trees help so much more than pretty much any fence you could think of for noise mitigation. So that's why we're wanting the denser landscaping. And then lastly, on the sewage and the potential of using the grinder pump to pump into the, uh, the 10-mile trunk shed. Um, preliminary models have shown that it can handle what's shown as the potential flow from this site. So there should be no issues there from the public works perspective. what's shown as the potential flow from this site. So there should be no issues there from the public works perspective as well.
Councilman Holden. Joe, real quick, that south covered storage, that's a long Ustick. And you talked about not having metal. So does a roof have to be asphalt or some other material? Or can they utilize a metal roof for, for that particular facility?
Great question, Councilman Holden. The roof material is not discussed as much in the architectural standards manual. It's more the wall material. The roof can be a metal roof, correct? It just can't have high reflectancy. We don't want to blind people driving down the road.
Becky, I guess one more question if I can. I guess maybe two questions. You, you had talked about a berm. So my assumption is that you, the applicant, they're not opposed to a, a berm as well. I know it's not in condition in the staff report according to Joe, but is that something that you're?
Yes, they're, they're comfortable with, with some berming, but with, obviously with the height of the fence, we don't need a huge berm.
Sure.
Berm, 11 foot fence and then have planter beds, landscaping. You know, go through the full CZZ process and, and have the staff provide comment on the architect technical standards. They look through your design standards and, you know, there were some masonry buildings which had different materials and textures and colors. And they said, you know, we can do that on the back of that, of that building. You know, so if you're envisioning like an RM steel building, that's not what their intent is. No. Not on what's exposed to Ustick. No.
Becky, you've got your, your right turn lane there. You know, and you've obviously heard a lot of feedback from council tonight about concerns about the road. Would your client be opposed to having access off Naomi on to Ustick only be right out until Ustick is improved?
I have to defer to.
Maybe a question to be answered later. I just.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Maybe a idea, not sure Becky, what, what direction you and your client want to go. We, we appreciate the partnership with ACHD. I just, I'm wondering if you guys want to consider a continuance to go back and discuss with the commission. If they are able to accelerate the plans to widen Ustick, they want to take the opportunity to see if that's possible. And how that could be accelerated or if it can't be accelerated, if they want to try to work with the city. I know the mayor has often suggested plans to accelerate road improvements. And then come back to us with something more fully fleshed out. I can't speak for the rest of council. I'm, I'm not comfortable. You know, widening Ustick is within ACHD's complete control. And I, I'm not convinced that CO issuance or these DA provisions give us any enforcement whatsoever to make sure that these issues are mitigated. So, so that's my concern. So I just wanted to throw that out there. If you want to go back and, and get a timeline more fully flushed out where you could perhaps accelerate and reprioritize Ustick to make it, you know, one of the top priorities.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, Paul Dale, Chief of Staff. With regard to the meeting, you, as I recall, you guys have just sent us a letter asking for a meeting to discuss some sidewalk issues. So it would be a perfect opportunity for us to continue this discussion with the commission, especially with regard to accelerating the timeline. With regard to the right in, right out, at least initially, since there's not going to be that much truck traffic there, I think we could, we could go along with that at least initially until we start getting a, a little more traffic through there. So I, I will give you a tentative, yeah, we can, we can probably go along with that.
And just, I don't want to run afoul, Mr. Mayor, I assume we don't want to. But we have to notice the public hearing for a joint meeting to have a conversation with ACHD about items related to this.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, that's, that's a great question because again, we're mixing up a land use record with now a joint meeting record. And that's a little more problematic to do. I mean, without really running afoul of trying to combine them if there's a reason to. So although I appreciate the offer, I don't know how we could do that. I think it's problematic. I think that's why the council's request was for the staff to go back and talk to the commissioners and come back and report it as part of this hearing. Rather than try to put it back on the council to do that as part of a hearing. Now again, if their commission president wants to come on behalf of the commission or a commission representative wants to come and to give testimony on behalf of the commission, maybe that would be a cleaner weighted.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll take that message back to the commissioners. I will be meeting with them tomorrow. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
Just a brief comment. Councilwoman Schrader's comments with regards to the Ustick, I think is a critical piece for me as well. A reference to completing that to Hawaii, this is a corridor it's going to have now. Amongst everything else, you can have a pile of kids all over this road. This is intense use. There's going to be a lot of trucks. This is a forever decision. So that, among other issues, is a critical issue for me as well. So having that commitment accelerated and defined clearly is.
Mr. Mayor. I want to counsel woman Schrader's points regarding CO. Understood. I wasn't there for the conversations, but I understand the premise of that. My original language, if you look at J, does say no building permit can be submitted, which is more restrictive. We're not holding a CO at that point. We're not even letting them apply for a building permit. So it's more restrictive. It might mitigate some of those issues, obviously. The applicant doesn't want that, but that's why they're requesting some changes, but we do not have to allow that. So just want to leave that on the table for council as well.
Thanks, Sean. I'm not going to put words in council's mouth, but I'm going to put words in council's mouth. I'm, what I'm hearing is no billing or no certificate phase four until one Ustick road is constructed, not dig. So, so I think that there's probably a
Sure.
where there's phase four. That's what I'm kind of hearing.
Understood.
So. And, and just from my standpoint, you know, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm counting votes just like you are. As I already mentioned, the roads, the road priorities is bigger than the sweet stripper priorities in my book. So if you're counting where the council is right now, I think a continuous would be a great option for this to figure this out.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to, for the staff to go back to the commission and hopefully we can gather some additional information. And, you know, give you more breakdown of the trip data based on the phasing. And, and come back with some better answers for you. So I guess this item, give us an opportunity to, to gather that information and have the staff go back to the mission.
Okay, so do we like further comments?
Mr. Mayor, just for Becky to, to find out what, what, how much time is needed to, to, to accomplish that.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was just going to say not August 17th because I will not be here. Please. My wife and I will finally do our honeymoon. So.
I don't want to impinge on his honeymoon.
Please don't.
Joe doesn't want that either.
Mr. Mayor. July 27th is available. August 3rd is not, and then August 10th is as well. Although August 10th is pretty crowded. So I'd recommend going beyond that to Joe's honeymoon or to, to two weeks as requested if.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Harden.
Unless I misunderstood some of the direction, it sounds like the ask is a really big one. Not so much staff level metrics on the use might not be as intense as we think. Think if we assume that this is extremely intense and there's lots of trucks and it's more of the policy consideration perhaps of the commissioners to say, would you agree to a specific provision that has its commitment to accelerating Ustick Road from 10 miles to the high school prior to a building where the uses really would even begin. Come real, it's a really clear but hard ask. I don't know if that allows them to even gather within two weeks necessarily to talk about the pros and cons of that. I think to be clear, that's what I felt like I was hearing from us. That might necessitate a little more time on your.
Mr. Mayor, council members, if I may, I would still like to go for the two weeks. I, I want to try to get commitment from our commission in order to get you, you folks some, some answers. If I find out that it's going to take a little longer, then I'll beg your forgiveness and, and we'll, we'll ask Joe when it's convenient.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Just for schedule sake, I, I would, I would put it at least until Joe is back from his honeymoon. That date is according scheduled. Things, I'll leave that up for the clerk. Let us know what that is.
I can let you know, Mr. Mayor, the 27th has the continuance of the UDC text amendment application, and that is the only land use hearing on that night. And then moving beyond that, we'd be looking at August 24th due to national night out, another hearing scheduled.
When's your honeymoon?
I will be back the 24th. That's my first day back.
Fourth of July.
August, sorry.
Councilman Cavanagh is going to be out of town too.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I, I don't want to hinder the process.
But it's important.
But I won't be here on the, on the 27th, unfortunately.
I would, I would continue this. I don't believe we have a meeting on the 31st, so it would be, it would be September 7th would be the first date that we have available. Don't, Becky, we.
I'm thinking because I.
Mr. Mayor, Becky, we don't, we don't have, we're not meeting on the 31st. We don't meet on the fifth Tuesday of the month and so.
I hope I don't have conflict. I have a lot of hearings and. I think I'm okay. They say thumbs up.
So, council motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we continue item H dash 2021 dash 0029 to September 7th.
Second motion. I have a motion second to continue the meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
Just real quick again, I appreciate council president making sure we get an application before us. We kind of blinders come up about who's behind the application. And I appreciate the council president, a good reminder of us just how much we appreciate the commission. And, and everything the highway district does for our citizens. And, and Paul, you've got a, a great team. It's great having you here. I think we're all a little partial to your communications manager. But we appreciate having you here in this building nevertheless. So thanks for coming out tonight.
All right. Any further comments? If not, on favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The guys have it and the item is continued. Councilman Schrader, did you, did you have something you were wanting to say? Sorry.
Yeah, I am in support of continuing, obviously. Likely would not be here on September 7th due to a family holiday. So. Um, but I hope you're in good hands. Just. So, yeah.
Thank you. ACHD, may I want to stick around for a second?
Mr. Mayor. If we're, if we're continuing it all the way out to September to account for my schedule, I've got a lot, I feel guilty about that, only to find out we've got another council member on that particular date. So we know sometimes this is, we're, we're, we're a team of six and votes land where they vote and there's no hurt feelings. I think if, if it doesn't go the way we go because we're not here. And so I'd hate to prolong it all the way out to September to encounter the same issue that we're having. So I don't know, council, maybe, Mr. Mayor, I know that I'm maybe kind of getting out there on a ledge a little bit, but maybe if there's an opportunity for council, at least have a discussion about what we just passed and potentially make a motion for reconsideration. That we can better discuss this and make sure that we're picking a date that either we can all be here or that we can at least accelerate based on the request from ACHD for two weeks and, and give them that opportunity. I, I don't, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but it just, I saw some furrowed brows and we heard that Councilmember Schrader wasn't going to be here and at least before we adjourned for the night, just have that conversation.
Mr. Murray.
Where is the council? I mean, again, I know you don't have a fifth Tuesday meeting. You can schedule a special meeting on the 31st. It doesn't have to be at six o'clock. It can be at anytime you wish. If you want to do that versus moving it past the 14th or past the 7th, but that's just an option that you have. I don't think we have any other conflict to have it on that date. And you're not required to hold it at night. You could hold it at noon if you wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, what's the process of doing what Councilman Cavanagh mentioned as far as a reconsideration is concerned? I don't know if I've ever done that.
So, Mr. Member is the council. All you need to do is one of the members who, the prevailing side, which you all voted in favor.
To reconsider.
With simply motion, motion to reconsider, have to have that seconded, have that approved by voice vote, and then you can make a new motion.
Mr. Mayor.
I move, we, we consider the previous vote taken on the setting of the public hearing, continuing to the public hearing of the previous item.
I have a motion second to reconsider the previous motions, our discussion. If not, all those in favor of reconsidering, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those name, as have and the item is open for reconsideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm supportive of a continuance for two weeks. If I agree with Councilmember Board, I think that's a, it's a big ask to get answers back in two weeks, but to trust the highway district staff, if they think they can get it done, they'll get it done. And if not, then at that point in time, maybe we look at either a fifth Tuesday or deeper in September, perhaps. I, I don't know how the rest of the body feels.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader, can you be here in two weeks?
I'm check.
I'm not though.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yes, I will be here. I am sorry, I feel guilty. That I maybe, I didn't mean to, I trust all of you to make decisions whether we're here or not. But I hope you didn't think that's what I was saying because that's not at all how I feel. I trust you guys to make the right decision when I'm not here or here or whatever. It's just Raja Shana. So it's a family holiday and I can't be here on the 7th, but it's a big one, but any other day generally, except for when my kids are in summer camp, I will make it happen. So.
Well, here's, my, my, my honest belief is there's not going to be a resolution on the 27th. It'd be good to have a general direction. We could continue till the 27th and then look at resetting for a, a day at that point in time, if necessary, a special meeting. Yeah, yeah, I think we, and honestly, I bet you ACHD can communicate through staff and will know well in advance if that's even an option. So.
Mr. Mayor, correct. If we cannot make the twenty seventh, we'll know before and we can request continuance even before. Perfectly fine.
This gets out tonight. Councilman Borden.
I move that we uh, wait a minute.
Sorry, close. Just make a motion to continue.
Mr. Mayor, move that we uh move the uh this, this item H dash two zero two one dash zero zero two nine to July twenty seventh.
Second.
Push a second to continue this item till the twenty seventh. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signature by, by saying aye.
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 Those name, the guys have it, I just continue till the twenty seventh.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Do we now then need to close the public hearing?
Uh, it's already been closed. Or I'm sorry, no, that we didn't close it because it's been continued.
Oh, we're going to leave it open because it's being continued. Okay.
Yeah, or did? Did we close it? Okay.
We want additional information.
Yeah, okay, yep. All right, next item up is ordinance, under ordinances, is the third reading of ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen thirty three. Ask clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Meridian approving the second amendment to the Meridian revitalization plan, urban renewal project. Which second amendment seeks to de-annex certain areas from the existing Meridian revitalization project area. Which second amendment amends a plan that includes revenue allocation financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to the county, affected taxing districts and state officials, providing severability, approving the summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You've heard this item read for the third time. They went like as written in its entirety. If not, I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pulling my agenda back up here again to grab the ordinance number. I will make a motion unless someone else would like to.
Twenty one nineteen thirty three.
Great. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty one one nine three three with a suspension of rules. Do we need that on the third hearing?
We do, we do not.
We do, we do not. All right. Would you like me to make the motion again?
Just for clarity, since it was a second.
Absolutely. Uh, I move that we approve ordinance number two one one nine three three. Second motion.
I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number twenty one nineteen three three. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Stryder.
Aye.
Togan.
Aye.
Burn.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries and the ordinances agree to. Councilman Borden.
We just, uh, I was just talking with uh council member Borden about seat five and ordinances, and I think uh Ms. Perot has just carried the torch like a champion. Well done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm still under the weather today, so I uh I appreciate you helping me along on motions that we normally make all the time.
Awesome. Um, anything on our future meeting topics? Then item five was vacated. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion, motion a second to journal, in favor, sign by, by saying aye.
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 Nay, the eyes have it, we are adjourned.
Aye.
Good night.